Hi Eric, are you on? Hi Eric.
Hey John. How's everything going?
Be good. You in the office tonight?
Yep. Oh wait.
This is the mute button in the corner.
Which one? Oh yes, I see.
Hi Karen.
Hello. I know one, another piece of paper here. Wait a minute please. How are you?
Be good.
Good.
Karen, the coffee shop is getting back, getting back to normal a little bit.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind. Have you been there?
Yeah, a couple of times a week.
They have great coffee.
Yeah, everything's good and they're open till 11 o'clock in the morning and then on Saturday mornings.
Do they sell coffee beans as well? I can't remember. Okay, I need to buy some. So that's good to know. Okay, okay.
Hey Larry. Can you see my board down there? All right, I think I'm good. Let's run it out.
Hello.
Hey Karen, hey John.
So you're all retired now?
I'm officially tired, tired and retired.
Tired and retired, okay.
Yeah, it seems like I'm working more now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anybody who doesn't say that.
Like, where did I find time to even take care of the house when I was working?
Exactly, how did I do this? Right? Yeah. I get it.
Yeah, I'm working on a new business. Oh yeah, busy.
Yeah, like totally new or related?
Totally new. Kept me busy so far.
That's important. Yeah, that's when I started the planning board. I decided I needed something totally new from education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So your past is all in education?
Well, education, quality training. We did a lot of performance stuff.
Okay.
So, but started out in education, yes. And this is not the same.
Good evening guys, how are you guys doing?
I'm here. Hi Amanda.
Hi folks.
Yep.
See who we got. Robert, we got Amanda, we've got Ryan, got Karen. Okay, just need Gary.
No, he's here.
Hey, oh there we are. How's the new retiree doing?
Great. Really good.
So how you feeling your days?
I was telling Karen, I'm so busy now, I don't know what I was doing earlier.
That's retirement.
Yeah.
That's right.
Hey, more time to spend on planning board issues.
Yes.
Good. Eric, if you'll bring that flag up, I guess we're getting ready. John's here, okay, so we got our secretary, we got our engineer, and we got our guest, great. Okay, clock in a while, shoot, six o'clock. Let me give us our flag, Eric. Okay folks, would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You folks have tuned in to the July 28th, 2020 public meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Canadega. We have a healthy agenda, so let me tell you a little bit about our procedures here, if you've not been with us before. With each application, I will ask the applicant to make a presentation. And once that's completed, the board members will have an opportunity to question the applicant on what he presented or any other items that they found in their research. After that, we will open it up to members of the public, the comments they may have. And once that's completed, we'll go back to the applicant for any last minute discussions and then the board will deliberate and we do vote tonight on each application, if all things are being equal and applications are complete, so you will have your decision tonight. We do ask that if you intend to address the board, please state your name and address. It's helpful to our secretary in keeping track of who attended and who said what. So with that, I will open the meeting up for anybody who would like to address the board on an issue that is not, that is not on the agenda. Okay, I see we have no, no legal notices. Oh, let me pull the board, gosh, let me introduce everybody. You guys are working so hard, let me give you some credit as to what you're doing. Karen Blazey?
Here.
Ryan Stachak?
I am here.
Gary Humes?
Here.
The newly retired Bob Lacourse?
Here.
Okay, our old man, Amanda Van Niken. We are also joined by Recording Secretary John Rovatella, as well as Lance Bravant representing our engineering firm MRB. Chris Nadler is on call, should we meet him, he is our attorney. And running the controls is Eric Cooper, our town planner. So with that being said, seeing that no one had any, any items outside the agenda, let's move on to the first item on the agenda. And that being James Fahey and Venezia Associates representing Sue Kiernan, owner of property at 4691 North Mentheeth. And Sue is seeking to a single-stage site plan approval for the construction of a single-family dwelling. And they had their hearing with the ZBA on the 21st and were successful in getting that relief. So I will open it up to whoever's representing the applicant and please give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, board. I hope all's well with everyone this evening. This is Jim Fahey from Fahey Design Associates. I believe, if I'm not joined now, hopefully in any time, Anthony Venezia will be jumping on the line also, who is the civil engineer with the project. We are here this evening and our, our direct client is Gregory and Julie Couvalier, who are in the process of acquiring the property from the Kirans and plan on building a new single-family dwelling at 4691 North Mentheeth Drive. Our project includes a demolition of a 53 square foot storage shed, followed by the construction of a new 3,071 square foot, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage and associated site improvements as shown on the site plan on the screen in front of us. Fahey Design has been, we have been in charge of all architectural and structural design elements for the project. Venezia is responsible for the site grading, drainage and utility design for the project. Bill Grove of Grove Engineering is working, currently working and is well into the septic design and has been in touch with the Ontario County SWCD as part of his work to address any questions that they may have. Dan Hackett of Ted Collins has also been working with us in development of our landscape plan for the project. So we have a very experienced and close working team here. As you had mentioned, we presented to the zoning board of appeals on the 21st and received their approval for three area variances requested. I don't, I won't get into all the details other than, because I'm sure you're, you've been reviewing this and are up to speed, but I can say that the team has been working diligently as a team on a very difficult site in effort to meet not only our clients' design requests, but respecting all of the town's planning and zoning requirements, the existing neighborhood setting and the Canadega shoreline development guidelines. In the positioning of our house, making sure that we are not infringing on views from the neighboring properties, nor are we putting ourselves in a position where we would be affecting existing natural vegetation along the shoreline in respect for your shoreline guidelines. We've had a pretty extensive foundation planting plan that's been handed in to you to review to help buffer some of the impact of the new home on the property. And Bill is working diligently on the septic design, which will be positioned to the west of North Mentheeth and east of County Road 16 on a steep slope area. So we have, we have a tough spot there, but Bill feels very comfortable in where he's going with the design of the septic, feels confident that it will be accepted by the county and is moving forward on that. The, the proposed home, I provided some, some graphics on the home, not only preliminary floor plans, but some 3D elevations where you can kind of get a feel for what the home is. It's basically a craftsman style. First floor is right around 2,400 square feet, so it's not an imposing home on the property. We've, we've done our best to respect all of the zoning requirements and really, if it wasn't for the restrictions of North Mentheeth, cutting through our property, we really have a non-building site if we weren't granted the front yard and rear yard setbacks. Our building envelope, just for the edification of the board, varies between three foot in depth and 10 foot of depth in respect of the 60-foot setbacks from North Mentheeth and from the high watermark along the shoreline. So we've worked hard to respect side yard setbacks on neighboring properties, but really those front and rear yard setbacks were almost a necessity to, to make this a buildable project. The home exterior will be principally a gray stucco finish that was shown on that 3D rendering and a thin-cut quarry granite veneer to accent that. There will be timber posts on the porches and some trussing elements as part that are all, will be timbered and will be washed with a light gray stain. Also matching that will be the fascias and rakes. Windows and doors will have a light gray colored trim surrounding them with, not on the lakeside, but on the roadside, there will be some Borden-Banton gray style colored shutters. The roof will be a dark gray standing seam metal roof and our main entry doors to the home on the roadside and the overhead doors will be custom stained wood. So that's a kind of a quick synopsis of what we're planning. If you have any questions on the architectural side of this, I'd be more than happy to answer that now. If you'd like, I can put this over to Anthony and have him discuss site elements for the board.
Hey James, this is Bob Lacourse calling.
Yes.
I was at your site a couple of weeks ago, I noticed there's a lot of trees out front there and relatively flat. Are all those trees staying or what do you use your plan there?
Well, if you, if you look at the landscape plan, Bob, we've tried to maintain as many of the trees as we can. There, there are a few that will be removed that are within the body of the house, but I think the key thing that we're doing is along the lakeside, you can see there's a 42-inch willow at the northeast corner and a 32-inch oak at the southeast corner of the property, right along the lakeshore that we will be maintaining. So that'll help give the veiling effect that I know the board is interested in maintaining along the lakeside. We've also planted a London plane just to the northeast corner of, of the house to help provide a little bit more forward buffer for the home. And then we've surrounded it with lower landscaping and plantings. And then as you move to the roadside, you can see we have some fairly mature trees just to the east of, of the, of North Mentheeth that will be, will, will remain. And then a considerable number that we're trying to keep to the west of North Mentheeth. But I, I'm careful in saying that because this final septic system has not been truly ferreted out and there will be some retaining, small retaining walls in that steep slope in order to build the, the septic. So some of those trees, as much as I like to say they will all stay to the west, I'm not 100% sure of that.
Thanks James. Also, the picture that's being shown right now shows your patio. I believe I saw a picture where that was cut off at an angle, is that the correct way or?
It's correct. When I first submitted this, I, I in error did not realize that that patio was encroaching on a setback. Finding that out, I, I cut that corner and you can see I've shown the 25-foot buffer. So we will be cutting the, the corner of the patio when this is constructed to stay within required setbacks.
Is that on your current site plan?
I think it, I don't believe it is, but I think it was discussed that, Eric, you can answer that one. I know we discussed it in the meeting last, but.
Yeah. It's not, we have not received a revised site plan showing it, but the zoning board essentially conditioned their approval on it being removed from the final site plan.
Thanks, James.
Yeah, yeah, and Board, this is Lance with MRB Group. It's also reflected in the MRB comment letter as well.
Thanks, Lance. Anthony, do you want to tell us a little about the site conditions?
Yes, again, I can definitely do that. So the site that we're in right now, it's a relatively flat site. When we're talking about stormwater, we're gonna, a lot of the stormwater infiltration practices we're going to be using is something that we've used on a lake before and it works really well. What it isn't going to be an 18-inch perforated pipe that kind of surrounds the house. There's, on the west side of the house, it goes to the north and then along the north line to the east. It's all an 18-inch perforated pipe that's surrounded in crushed stone. There's also another pipe that will run along the south boundary line, between the south boundary line and the house. And that water, any kind of shedding water from the roof drains or the driveway will be caught in these systems and it'll allow the system to percolate back into the soil before it gets to the lake. The way that we hold that back and keep it in the system is in an overflow dry well, an overflow well. So if we do get a big storm, it'll, that outlet is at the rim of these catch basins. And that allows us to hold back that water during a storm or a medium, medium-heavy storm. And then if there is a larger storm, that water will push up through the grate and instead of being a direct discharge onto the ground and create any kind of erosion, it'll kind of bubble up through the grate and then head to the lake in a slower, more controlled fashion. That's, that's how we will deal with stormwater in this area. It'll also help any kind of contaminants from driveways or anything like that kind of get back in the soil and not be directly discharged into the lake. During construction, there will be a temporary sediment basin on the northeast side, which will have a couple temporary, would just, the water will temporarily make it to that location before it gets discharged. So if there is any sediment or we have any kind of events while under construction, that water, any kind of muddied-up water will get held back and will be able to filter out before it gets to the lake if we have any events, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the board have any.
Anthony, I know the ECV had a concern about the dry wells as too being as close as they are to the lake. What are they, about 10 feet? One is maybe?
I think the concern was if it would surcharge that there wouldn't be enough area for the water to divers and soak into the ground before. It would be almost a direct flow into the lake possibly, so.
Well, I mean, you're talking, when there is a storm, there is, we have about, I gotta look at it real quick, but we have about, on the south side, we have 100 linear feet of pipe. On the north, we have 43 on the west side and then another 83 linear feet of pipe, 18-inch pipe surrounded in stone. So there is quite a significant amount of underground storage. So that's to prevent any extreme discharges to the lake.
What do you think, Lance?
So I guess, so there's two points. One is, okay. One is the plans don't really show where the roofs are going to tie into the system yet. So that was a question that we had. If the concern is removing or the location of the two closest dry wells from the lakeside, I just, I'm not sure that moving it back 10 feet is going to do that much. If we're talking moving it back 50 feet, it all depends on where they're tying their roofs in. You know, if the rear part of the roof is tying in, having an extra length of pipe before it gets to the dry well will help infiltrate some of that water prior to it overflowing the dry well. So I guess it comes down to where are they proposing the tie-in? And then how many feet are we talking about moving it back? If it's only going to end up being 10 feet, I don't know that that's going to matter in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, and I guess for every foot you cut back off from, further from the lake, it's less storage in the pipe itself. So you're giving up a little bit of pipe storage for distance from the lake.
Correct.
What we did ask for is potentially, and I'm looking at it and I'm not totally convinced that the overflow from the pipes closest to the lake are going to impact neighboring properties, but we were, we were suggesting that maybe they show a more stabilized path from the overflow potential of those pipes to the lake. But you know, that's typically in the form of riprap so that we have a location that's stabilized directing it to the lake as opposed to just a sheet flow, which there isn't much space between the dry wells in the lake to suggest that it's going to actually sheet flow. So we thought maybe we could provide a channelized, a more secure stabilized section between the dry well itself and the lake.
Yeah, that's absolutely a possibility.
Well, if you can work that out in the engineering details, it'd be appreciated. Ryan, we got a metal roof here, so we won't have an issue with.
There you go.
Yep.
Won't have an issue with asphalt, silt.
Right.
Anybody else from the board have any questions?
Chuck?
Yes.
This is Gary. I've got just a question, just to kind of understand the drawing a little bit. Up on the north, I guess, east side, it kind of shows this circular area there where there's the temporary sediment trap is in the middle. But that area and then to the northeast of that, it almost looks like a depiction of a a wall or riprap or something. Is that supposed to mean something? What is that area? Is that like a rain garden area or is it, what is it?
What that is, is a temporary sediment trap. What it is, is it just a depression that will, that any kind of stormwater runoff during construction will get into that? And then it's a riprap, kind of like a riprap berm that will let water out, but it'll filter it as it gets out. So it's just a temporary storage device for storm runoff if we have an event. It's, it's a, it helps the, it helps the silt fence not get overwhelmed and things of that nature. So it's just temporary. When it's, when we're done with it, it'll be regraded and it won't be there.
Yeah, Gary, it's, the main purpose right now would be during construction, they're going to have some temporary diversion swales throughout the site guiding the overflow to that area. And then that way, when the vegetation's removed, any sediment that it picks up during larger storm events, it's going to act as a storage area for that so that it doesn't have an impact on the lake. And then as it fills up during the larger events, as sediment fills up, we had to have a location where we can have an overflow, a conveyance of that rain, that runoff. And so that riprap is kind of acting like as a level spreader. And that's where the runoff will eventually, when it overflows, be guided to.
Okay. And then I guess the only other question I have is, I guess, around, you know, the septic system. I know there's been a lot of comments. It's kind of in a, at least a little bit west of a very steep slope area. My understanding is still being worked to get approval of that. I guess, Lance, I'd be interested in hearing from you what the, you know, what the issues may be and what's, what's the, from your perspective, what's the prospect that we're going to, that that'll all get approved?
So right now, I haven't seen any design plans on the septic system, so I don't really truly know what is being proposed. It's my understanding that Bill Grove is working on the design and ultimately, they're obligated to send it to the Soil and Water Conservation for their review and approval. I do know that they've responded back saying that they haven't received anything.
Bill has been working on it with Tyler, going back and forth. What it's going to be is it's going to be a tiered, a tiered PSF trench system. So it'll be, there'll be a pump take down at the house and it'll pump it up into the top. And then there'll be a tiered system with probably two walls. It'll probably be about four-foot walls in that, in that general area. And it'll be a G on trench system, which is a, more of like a geotextile sand filter system. It's not quite a raised bed. It doesn't have to be as thick of a material, but that's the way that we're going. It helps in steeper slope areas and also areas that the soil isn't, isn't great. So that's the way that he's going. He's still working on a few details with Tyler. They've been going back and forth for a little while now and they've almost got it nailed down.
I think of that system we looked at last meeting, remember with Mr. Day? That was on a side of a hill too, so it's, yeah, getting the water, water tends to find the lower, the lower elevation and yeah, you got to be able to slow the water up so you get the infiltration and the treatment that occurs. DOH has to look at this too, right, Anthony?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll probably be a joint approval because of, it'll probably, it'll need a waiver. So we're working on that with, Bill's working with both.
We will be all over it in our conditions.
Yes, absolutely. That was, that was what we were, I was expecting was a condition on that, making sure that that is all buttoned up before we get anywhere further.
Okay, thank you.
Karen? Anybody there? Any questions? You're our lake drainage expert as far as living on the lake.
Well, I like the roof. I'm with Ryan. Made me feel very good. We won't have that debris problem. And the only problem I, the only question I have rather, and I think Ryan will talk to this, is oak tree, willow tree? Ryan? Sometimes you advise people not to keep kinds of trees, so I was just curious.
Yeah, those are both, the willow will continue to grow even if you take a branch and stick it into the soil. So they're nice trees for that. And the oaks, as long as, you know, if the gypsy moth doesn't get it, you know, and they treat it, you know, those are usually hardy trees.
Great.
Yeah, so thanks for that, Karen. I do have a couple of questions, Chuck.
Go ahead.
For Lance, what are the green infrastructure components of this plan?
So this project is using the dry well for infiltration purposes. So all their roof runoff, assuming that, my assumptions are correct. Again, the plans don't show or note that the roof's going to be tied in, but I'm assuming they will be.
That is correct, Lance.
All right. They will ultimately tie into the underdrain system that's perforated pipe to help do infiltration into the ground. And then during the larger storm events, obviously that pipe will overflow and ultimately make its way to the lake. But that's, that's essentially what we've been approving for most projects.
Right, this is a reoccurring theme. I'm just asking. And so with those dry wells being close to the lake, why can't we, why couldn't there be that dry well that's in the northeast corner? Why couldn't there be a rain garden where that temporary sediment trap is and that dry well goes into the middle of the rain garden and acts to filtrate that water to stop the overflow and appease the Environmental Conservation Board and the other concerns that came up?
So I can at least answer the fact that, I mean, putting a rain garden there will do water quality for you. You know, it's not going to do the quantity control that I think we're talking about. But you most certainly can put a rain garden there and have whatever overflow comes out of that, that pipe ultimately enters the rain garden and then goes back into the ground. But I have a feeling that these larger storm events that we're really concerned about, a rain garden, the dry wells, a bio-retention facility in these locations aren't going to do anything. They're just, the soil media isn't, isn't there for that, that to take place. The water's just in the ground already. They're going to overflow and go right to the lake.
So is that going to be consistent on all of the plans that we see tonight? Those same thoughts?
Well, not necessarily. I think, I think each project is a standalone project and has its own problems or potential mitigation measures proposed. But on this particular one, they're proposed, Ryan, I just, all's I'm trying to say is that I think if the board is concerned with quantity of water getting to the lake, the elements that are proposed meet that concern. They're doing what they can to infiltrate it. If the board is concerned with water quality features, additional rain gardens most certainly will help provide that. But I don't think it's going to help you with the overflow from the larger storm events that I think we're concerned with.
Okay. Anthony, how are we going to protect those roots of the trees that you proposed that we're going to keep on site?
Um, most of the trees that are close to construction will have a construction fence around them to stay as whatever would be approved. I don't know what the, what the distance is per tree caliper for construction fence, but any tree that's close that we're trying to save, that we will be saving will have a construction fence around it so people don't run over the roots close to the tree.
Can you detail that on the plan?
Yeah, we can add that to the plan, absolutely.
And then my last concern, and I'm okay with the green infrastructure that we talked about, but I just want to bring it up because we continue to hear these issues. And there's got to be some progress we can make on that stuff in the future, but it's something at least we're talking about. My last concern is that Tyler cautioned that we don't approve the plan. So this is, I'd like to kind of just talk about that. Like, it seems like he's a little bit different than George Barden. And so with the new person, he cautioned in his comments that I read earlier that any approvals should be reserved until he gives the authorization. And I don't know what the board thinks of that. I just want to kind of bring it to our attention that he was asking for that as a new, you know, someone that's going to be reviewing all of our things. I don't know what, what, I'm trying to get a temperature on what that means in comparison to just conditioning it. Like, you know, what can, Eric, maybe you could speak to Tyler and what his intentions are with that wording?
Yeah.
Yeah, and my, my read of that, it was, was all conditioned on the approval of the septic system, which is why I was asking those questions. I think that was his concern, right?
I don't know what his concern was. I just saw the comment. I don't know what it was.
He, at this time that he sent that letter or email, which this was back in May, and then I believe he sent a follow-up in the beginning of July. He hadn't seen plans yet. I believe Bill submitted them to him only a week or two ago, just a little bit prior to the zoning board meeting. So I'm not sure if he has a better understanding of them now. Obviously, I can't speak to his intent just because it's kind of his words. But being that it is a difficult site to put a septic system in, as he kind of pointed out in his letter, he, I guess, felt that it would be more cautious to hold off until it was officially approved. But again, I can't really speak for him.
We've never done that. We've always just done, you know, our conditions on kinds of comments like that, but we don't wait to prove it. We put another whole step in there.
Yeah, I agree. This is Jim Fahey again. I agree with that. I mean, it's almost like semantics here. We fully understand that your approval will be conditioned on a septic system that is approved.
Right.
So, you know, it really, if we don't get over that hump, regardless of what we've done with zoning and planning, we have a, we have to get over that. So I think just the fact that it's a condition of your approval keeps us, keeps you covered as a town equally as not providing your approval of this project with that condition. I'm making sense?
Yeah. For the board's sake, you know, in the past, what we've typically have done is, and we've usually had comments that were along the lines of, we're reviewing this, we're okay, we're moving forward. We've typically conditioned them on getting that approval prior to issuance of a CVO. So that would allow them to actually start building the project, going through the reviews while not have, while not actually receiving the approval yet from the county, or excuse me, from the soil, the septic system design approval. In this case, I think what we're suggesting, and I'm only suggesting for tonight's consideration, that it would be based on prior to issuance of a building permit. That prior to even getting a permit, we're asking for an approval to be provided based on those comments. I think that would be the language that would be recommended if the board was going to move forward.
I agree with that, Lance.
I think that's very fair.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the reason I bring it up is because Tyler's fairly new. We, George Barden was there for many years. I read this and I, I want to be respectful of someone that is important to our planning process. I want to make sure that that individual understands, and this is all for the record too, please, John, that that person recommends or understands that we read his approvals or his recommendations. We take them seriously and I just want to give him respect and discuss these, the comments because it's a really important site. And, and, and discuss these, these, um, the comments, uh, because it's a really important site. Uh, it would be great to have sewers down there, right, like we like to have sewers, but we don't, and so. I just wanna make sure Tyler gets the message that we take him very seriously, and even if we do condition it. I would be in support of conditioning that before any building permits, as you mentioned Lance, so thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm ready to move forward if everybody else is.
I'm, I'm good.
One other suggestion regarding this issue, uh, I mean, we could go so far as to require. The uh. Permit before signing the plans. Now that would be a lot more drastic and would put them under a clock of a hundred and eighty days, but. Uh, if that's a, if that, if, if the board's fine with building permit. We'll, we'll move with that, otherwise we could take it back to no plans are signed until the septic permit has been issued.
I think if it's a condition, I'm perfectly comfortable, 'cause a condition is a condition and you're not gonna sign a, you know. Nobody's gonna sign.
What's the trigger Karen, is it the?
The septic.
Yeah, but I mean, is it for issuance of the building permit or issuance of the signing of the plans?
Well, I would say, uh, you're not gonna sign any plans without an approved building permit, right? I mean, without a proof.
No, the, the, the order is the plans get signed, they get recorded.
Oh, that's right.
Applicant waits for his building permit. So I'm just, I'm just saying that as an option, we could take it back one more step, so it's up, it's up to you guys. I mean, by, by, by putting it at the building permit stage, I think we're, uh. We're, we're tightening the screws a little more, so uh, maybe we don't, we'd be over, over killing it with the signing the plans.
How much will the final design of the septic system? Impact the disturbance of the steep slope area and also the various trees and stuff in here?
Well, it's pretty much where that is, that footprint, because it will be more of a tiered system and not a tapered system. It's pretty much gonna be confined into that footprint that we, that Bill created.
Well, so if. You know, if the, if the planning board chair signs something like this, but it also doesn't show final grading, I don't know that that. Is an accurate representation of what the plans would be. So that.
The, the signed plans would have to be.
After that's been designed, maybe the chair should sign it.
Yeah, the, the updated site plan should, should reflect Bill's design altogether for, um, the chairman design. I agree with that.
Me too.
And that'll be updated, so when he does put his signature on it, it's the same plan that, you know, it's, it's a. It's a hybrid plan of our site plan and Bill's together, then you'll have Bill's specific couple sheets that he typically does with details. So you'll have two plans, but they'll both reflect the same plan.
So Anthony, would that plan reflect his design, or would that plan reflect the approved layout?
It would, uh, it would, what we would do in this situation is. We would make sure that all of MRB, um, all MRB's comments were addressed when, when we.
Yep, that applies to the septic system, yeah.
And then, then the septic system before, once Bill has the final design approved, well, we will. Put that, we will work that into this plan that you're seeing here, so when you sign that, you're actually signing the same plan that Bill has approved.
Okay. Then we, we could condition it upon, the, the signing of the plan upon an approved system.
I think we should, I think, I'm sorry.
And I, I think that would make Tyler feel more comfortable, more in compliance with what he's looking at or asking for. That the plan has not been signed and, signed and sealed until the design is complete and approved.
Yeah, and I think, I think if that's right, I, I, I think this warrants a conversation, I, I appreciate that we're talking about it. Steep slopes just to the, to the east of that approximate location on the plans. I don't know if we can allow, I mean, there's steep slope laws and Eric, if, if they go into that area or, or to the west. You know, that, I guess that that maybe there are some concerns, I think the EA, the environmental. Uh, board also had some concerns about that, so I just, I appreciate this conversation. Um, and I'm willing to do whatever you do Chuck, I think Chuck knows where we are and what our thoughts are, I give him. Hope, but if, if, if for some reason Chuck, you wanna bring it back to us, I think that we could. I don't know what the harm is there, I, I recognize. I, I recognize we always wanna approve plans and, and continue to be supportive of development, I don't hear anything that's gonna. Kill this project in the next two weeks, so if we, I don't, I'm just.
I, I think the applicant's optimistic that they'll get the approval of the system and. And they get that, they get the plan signed, and they get the building permits, and they're off and running and. It'll be a project everybody can be proud of, so. Uh, alright, well, let's leave it at that, I, I think we've talked about it enough. Uh, one other thing I, I wanna double back on real quick and ask Eric, is there anything regarding the lot line adjustment that we should be looking at here? I, I know the lot line was adjusted to, to redistribute the area between the two lots. Uh, anything that she, should be of concern or discussion by this board, Eric?
No, we made zoning compliance. Or complied with the zoning code.
Okay.
So what, so I guess that was my question too, was that lot line, wh- what is, what is required to approve the lot line adjustment?
It's an administrative review essentially, but would be signed by the planning board chair. Um, generally, the planning board doesn't see lot line adjustments, theoretically, they could have. Just brought in a lot line adjustment plat and we would have signed it and filed it. But because they're doing that in conjunction with the site plan, it's before you are part of this application.
I know they sort of went hand in glove in the ZBA discussions because I, you know, I sat in those hearings and. There was some concern as, as far as the size of the lot and what, what the remaining lot was going to be in terms of size and. Um, though I think everybody ultimately decided this was the, uh. The, you know, the final layout and would work for, for both lots, so, uh, alright, well, if we have to do nothing else there, that's fine. Amanda, you have any questions on this application?
No, no additional questions, thank you.
Okay, good, uh, alright, well, before we go to, uh, we can, uh, action on the seeker and the. Site plan, let me just look at some of our outside agencies, again, the ZBA approved, uh. Four variances back last week. Uh, ECB, we talked about their concern with the, uh. Dry wells and also making sure that. Uh, landscaping was amended, or not amended, but supplemented to, uh, replace some of the trees that were being removed, they were also concerned about the septic system. Uh, Jim Fletcher, uh, had some concerns regarding the irrigation system and the size of the water service, which I guess. You've worked out with Jim Anthony? Okay. Uh. Lance, uh, I know, I, I had noted here some about the flood zone boundary, that was one of the concerns you had in your review letter. Anything else in your review letter that should be brought to the board?
No, I think we've highlighted a lot of it between the drainage, uh, the dry wells, roof runoff locations. Um, I think most of it's in, in that tense, uh. In that sense, but also in the sequence of construction of how, how the site's gonna function during construction. Uh, but no, I don't think I have anything additional that needs to be brought to the attention of the board. But I do, I do wanna highlight that the lot line adjustment plan does ultimately need to be signed prior to. Uh, permits being issued, typically prior to these plans being signed, 'cause you need to have a lot. So that's one of the conditions for your consideration tonight as well.
Okay. Uh, one of your other concerns Lance, was at least a discussion or a sign off in the shoreline guidelines. Uh, how does the board feel that, uh. This project's gonna look from the lake?
I think they're complying.
Yeah, I do as well, I think the, the keeping of the, the big trees there, the adding of the other tree of the north, and then the, the shrubbery and things around there, I think it. I think it looks fine.
Okay. Me too. Alright, uh, we see, uh, the OC planning board, uh, they recommend denial, as they typically do along the lake. Uh, the county public works, they just wanted to make sure the permit was, uh. Issued by their department for the boring under, uh, CR sixteen. We had no comments from the Cheshire Fire Department, we had no comments from Kevin Olveney. Uh, steep slope, we talked about. That's good. Shoreline, we talked about. Okay, anything else the board wants to consider, if not? Uh, let's move on to the seeker.
Sorry.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I do have one thing that I, I don't think is gonna be an issue, but I do wanna point out. Um, being that North Mantith has additional properties on that ends. Um, we did recommend in our letter that all construction vehicles be stored on site off that road, keep it open at all times. To allow fire apparatus in and out, to allow the residents in and out during construction, 'cause it's gonna take some time to complete the project, so. We did make that recommendation and that for a note to be added to the plans regarding that.
That's excellent.
Okay, there's your note about the flood zone boundary, okay. Alright, well, uh, that'll be a condition of the site plan rule anyway, is complying with Lance's letter, so let's move back to seeker. I will entertain a motion to consider a sequel resolution for a type two action.
I'll do, I'll do the seeker, do you want me to bundle it with the approval?
Uh, yeah, we just have to be careful on the approval, we looked at conditions, yeah, you can bundle it.
Okay, then I make a motion, I make a movement, I make a motion to approve the seeker resolution type two action. For, um, the CPN twenty dash oh three oh TM single site plan. And single site plan approval. With following conditions read by Lance.
Okay, uh, as far as the applicant, the applicant, uh, I know there are a lot of names in the mix here. Uh, the plans show one name, the application shows the Kieran name. The Kieran name, uh, I guess we ought to be consistent. Uh, Jim, Anthony, who, who?
I think you're safe staying with Kieran because they are the current owners of the property.
And Summer Hazel's next door, right?
Summer Hayes, right.
Yeah.
I would probably make your approvals through those names.
Okay, uh, but the plans will all reflect the, the buyers, the, the built, the, the new owners' names, right?
Whatever the town requires, we can put the name on it.
That's my question, what are we gonna put on, on the plans?
They can put the Couvalier name on there, but there should be a note somewhere saying who the current property owner is.
Okay, alright, let's get back to the site plan rule.
We have a motion.
Waiting on conditions.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote on seeker, uh, this is.
I did them together, so with the following conditions.
Alright. Let's.
You said that was good.
Let's look at the conditions, make sure. How we get Lance's letter? Okay, so number six.
Yes, yep.
I guess that'll need a slight adjustment.
So I, I think that the board, the way that you guys were suggesting it tonight, or at least what got brought up during discussion was that. Prior to signatures being affixed to the plans, the site plans are to be revised to show the final approved location of the septic system and design. And then prior, and, and an approval from Candegwill Lake Watershed Inspector, New York State DOH is to be provided. Something to that effect.
Sounds good to me. Everybody else okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just add into the findings Lance, that the, um, the plan included a, a metal roof and that was. That helped with our, thank you.
No, good point, yep, I will make that note.
Okay, is it seven or is there a, next page Eric? The ZBA variances, okay, fussers. Alright, so we have a, uh, we have two, we have a single motion for two actions, a seeker and a site plan approval. For the property out on North Mantith.
Can I add one more condition, just so that we're on the same page as the ZBA? That the patio area to the twenty-five foot setback be removed from the site plans?
Right, like I said, yeah.
I can add it, it's definitely, it's in my letter as well, but we can add that specifically, that the plans are to reflect the. Or as you referenced Eric, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote, all in favor?
Second to the motion.
Uh, Bob second.
Okay, thank you.
Made by Karen, seconded by Bob.
Thanks.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, folks, it was a long trip for you, but you finally got there, good luck.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Okay. Gonna move on to a, an application from Marathon Engineering, representing Michael Hess, owner of property at forty-six forty-five County Route sixteen. Who's seeking a single state site plan approval for the demolition of an existing dwelling, the structure of a new single family dwelling. And associated development. Uh, right up front, I wanna, uh, fully disclose that, uh. Michael Hess and myself worked together in a previous life, uh, but I do not feel it will influence my decisions on this matter, so. But I did wanna have it for the record that, uh, I know Michael and I worked with him, so, uh, welcome Michael.
That was a long time ago, I'm really surprised you remember Chuck.
That's when I had hair.
It's just twenty years anyway. It's a small world, it's, it's really shocking that we ended up in the same community.
Yeah, how about that, well, welcome to Candegwill and tell us a little bit about your project.
I, I will defer to others, but, um, the, the property that we're talking about is, is something I bought a couple of years ago down the road. I actually live on West Lake Road right now, uh, thirty-seven thirteen, I, I love it around here, it's great. Uh, but I bought a property to, to, you know, create a, a better foundation for myself, my family, my girls. Um, so that, you know, as they start to get married and have grandkids, that they've got a place to come on the lake and. We love it around here, so this, this kinda fits with what we're, uh, what we're trying to do in our life.
Good. So, uh, representing you, uh, as far as the presentation, will be someone from Marathon, I assume?
Yeah, yeah, Lucas Bushin here, thanks, thanks Mike and, and thanks everyone. Um, I'm here from Marathon Engineering, thirty-nine Cascade Drive. And you've already heard from Michael Hess, the property owner, uh, David Hanlon is also on the line, uh, the project architect. And we also have Dan Smith and Justin Hamilton from Hamilton Stern Construction. And to, to answer any questions that you have. Um, I'll quickly go through the site plan and then I'll, I'll, we'll have a, a small portion for, for David to, to introduce the architectural. Uh, elements of the, the building. And as was mentioned, we're seeking site plan approval for the construction of a single family residence. Uh, the property's located on the west side of Candegwill Lake, um, on West Lake Road, just south of the Wells Curtis intersection. Uh, the property is just over an acre in size and currently houses a single family residence. And the application, the application is proposing to, to demolish that residence and relocate it further from the lake. And there's two pre-existing non-conformities on the existing lot. Um, one is the, the primary structure setback from the lake and the other is the accessory structure setback from the lake. And both of those will be improving by shifting the home away from the lake. And if you can bring up the, the site rendering I sent over, I can talk through the site itself and, and how we got to where we are today. And it's gone through a number of different iterations in design in terms of. The house location and the driveway location and, and we went through multiple concepts to sort of dial this in to. You know, uh, meet both Michael's desires and, and the various requirements of the town. And we also sent a number of those concept plans into the planning department and got some of their early feedback. And incorporated that into the design that you see today. Uh, the home location was, was selected specifically, um, to, to sort of. Fit the existing site, and the existing site is relatively steep. And but it does have sort of three tiers to it, there's the, the upper level, which is where West Lake Road. Uh, connects with the driveway. The driveway then comes down into the site and there's sort of a mid-flat level before continuing down to the lowest level where the existing home currently sits. So we put this home in between the mid-level and the low level. The home said it's, it's got a walkout lower level, so it bridges that gap between the mid-level and the low level. And that accomplishes a number of things, but, but I think one of the more important is that it, it preserves the, the existing, you know, geometry of the site, both horizontally and vertically. It reduces the amount of regrading we have to do and therefore disturbance to the site. And it also means that we can use the existing driveway corridor, which again limits disturbance and clearing. And you, you can sort of see the, the three levels here in a cross-section we, we put together for the property. So you can see the upper level, obviously where West Lake Road is, the driveway comes down to the entry level. And then there's the, the patio lawn area in the back, which is where the existing home currently sits. And the other thing that we're able to maintain with the, the house location where we placed it is the existing septic system, which was revamped in 2017 to, to service a four-bedroom house with, which this is. And so that, that further reduces our disturbance in, in the amount of evasive construction we have to do on this site. Other site features that you'll see on the plan are a number of retaining walls to help facilitate some of these flatter pedestrian traversable areas. There is a late access stairway being proposed. And as I mentioned, the, the new accessory structure location, those have been designed to be cohesive and to work together, the, the new accessory structure, which is really a storage shed, set further back from the lake, sort of set into the bank and it will connect with, with the access stairway and, and have a cohesive look and, and work together. There's also a tram being proposed on the site. Which it's, it's the same contractor that, that builds all those trams on the lake. They're, they're relatively non-invasive construction. Little to no ground disturbance, they're set on pile foundations. And there, there will just be some, some clearing of scrub trees to install that, but it's, it's being selected in a location where we don't have to remove any significant trees or disturb the bank in that area. As I mentioned, we're, we're reusing the septic system, which is sized for a four-bedroom house. It's actually oversized, which I think is intentional. I estimate it, it runs at about 60% capacity with, with the four-bedroom households, but we're in the process of getting that approval from Ontario County. In terms of stormwater, we're, we're doing our best to maintain the existing drainage pattern. Most of the rainwater that falls on this site drains to the east towards Candega Lake. And there's no, there's no real off-site stormwater that, that drains through the site. What we will be doing is capturing that surface flow in and around the driveway area and the pedestrian areas, keeping that runoff off the pavement, off the driveway. And we'll be discharging that to a, a series of rain gardens, which will provide water quality volume for the, the one-year storm event. And that addresses the requirements of, that, that's a requirement of the steep slope law, but it also helps to just, to treat the increased impervious area associated with residential development. And the one other thing I'll mention about stormwater is that there's an existing driveway culvert under the, under the driveway in the county right away. And that culvert is completely plugged and, and has become buried with leaves and dirt. So part of our project is, is fixing that up and we understand that we'll need a county permit to accomplish that. We're replacing the water service to the home and upgrading that to the, the current town standards in terms of metering and, and pressure reducing valve. And then the electric service will also be run underground. It's currently overhead on private poles, so those will be removed and that'll be brought underground. In terms of erosion control, we're, we're aware that this is an important issue in this part of the town. And so with that, we, we focused specifically on areas, slope areas. So we've developed a procedure for restoring any banks greater than one-on-three slope using erosion control blankets. And then, as I mentioned, we have a, a planting procedure for how to get those to actually grow back effectively and, and to not continue to be a problem after construction is complete. In all swales and, and drainage channels, we're lining them with stone to protect them from erosion. All, all areas where, where water will channelize, we're, we're using that stone protection. And then just a, a strong effort's been made to implement, you know, standard erosion control procedures throughout the site to, to make sure that erosion is kept on site, that all sediment's kept on site and erosion's kept to a minimum. In conjunction with that, we've, we've, it goes to landscaping, which really starts with the grading plan. As I mentioned, we've, we've, we've gone through these steps of, of positioning the house where we're reducing the amount of grading and clearing we have to do and preserving as many substantial trees as possible, particularly buffer areas around the property. Even identifying some trees within the area disturbance that can be preserved. There was also a comment about wisteria vines, which were, which we've identified as, as being saved within those landscaping areas as a natural ground cover, understanding that, that those are desirable. And, and then finally, we've, you know, we've subsidized this all with an aggressive landscaping plan to, to bring this area back up to, you know, a lush green property after construction's complete. The last thing I'll mention before turning it over to David is that we've received a, a number of comments from town staff. I think that we're, we're overall pleased with, with the feedback we've gotten. I, I don't see any big red flags on, on our end and I, I feel confident that we can, we can address those with, with town staff and revise the plans to satisfy those concerns. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to, to David to talk about the building.
Thanks Lucas. Good afternoon, board members. So as Lucas was saying, you know, we took a hard look at the site. If you guys could go back to the site plan, I'll just start there real quick. He's that one of the, the landscaping plan was fine, if you want to zero in on that. You know, as he was saying, we took a look at the positioning of the house, you know, it's, it's a steep slope, so getting a car down to both the front door and the garage areas required that switchback that you see. But we're trying to work with the grade in that the house is set up such that you come down that first switchback and the front door is actually a half a flight above the main level. So that we didn't have to pull the, the building up all the way, you know, we're trying to work with the stepping of the site. You, you actually arrive at the front door, which is, you know, in the middle there and that is a half a flight up from the main level. And then the cars proceed down another four, four or five feet to the garage. So which is nice, it kind of conceals the garage off to the side there, it's at a lower level. It's actually at the same level as the main level. And then there's, like Lucas said, there's then a full walkout below the main level. So it's, it's basically a two-story house, it has a partial third floor. And so now if we go to the elevations, I can just show you the character of what's, of those are. This is the lakeside, if you go to the north elevation, that's a good place to start. Because this, this shows you kind of the, the more of, illustrates the massing better than the other two sides do. We have a, a number of different roof planes, so that, you know, we're working within the 25-foot rule. We're not going for variance on height. We've managed to manipulate the roofs, keep them low, working with the grades such that the average finished grade to the highest point is no more than 25 feet. And then as you go across the building, you have these different shaped, angled shaped roofs. So it is a, you know, more of a contemporary building, but it has some breakup in the volume and scale. So that, you know, it'll, it'll blend into the landscape. A lot of the materials here are, you know, are going to be a warm red cedar, some natural stone. The natural stone selection may actually be a little darker than what we're showing here. Then, you know, wood accents on frame. And then the slope druse will either be, you know, a metal roof or an EPDM roof. And then the decking that's on the lakeside will also be of natural materials. Or we're even contemplating some, you know, Corten steel, which is more of a natural rusted look to it. So if you go to, I guess, one of the other two longsides. You know, this is the side that faces the lake. It's a little bit deceiving because it looks like a big playing wall, but there's a lot of depth as you look back at the floor plan. You can see that the building moves in and out quite a bit. And so it, and the roof lines move up and down also as you go back and forth. The, the lower level, which is the walkout basement, would be a natural stone material. Then we have that horizontal deck at the main level. And then varying roof heights as you go across the, the lake elevation. The garage there is, you can see to the left, which is down lower, and then there's a walkout condition adjacent to that. If you go to the other side, the lakes, the roadside, that's where you can see there's that entry element in the middle, which kind of picks up. So as a car arrives, you know, it grabs people at the front door and then slopes down to the garage on the right-hand side. So as you can see, again, it's a lot of natural materials. As you see these against the hill, we're trying not, you know, we're trying to make this more welcoming appearance, approachable appearance that, with the natural materials that can blend into the landscape. So that's, that's a quick synopsis of the building itself and how it, you know, tries to blend in with what Lucas is saying about approaching the layout on the site.
What are you using for windows? Is that just natural see-through glass or you thinking reflective glass? Because it's deceiving, I can't tell.
Yeah, and you know, we, we could produce a, a more realistic rendering. It would be natural, just, you know, clear glass, it would not be a reflective glass. So no, just a, a typical Marvin Pella type window and then clad with, you know, wood trim.
Hey David, the face that faces the lake, would that be the east side there?
Yeah.
There's a lot of what appears to be white or gray. What kind of material is that going to be, is that going to be your rock?
That would be a stone, yeah, it would be a stone material. The rendering, this, it came out fairly white. It kind of faded out on the image, sometimes it happens when it gets copied and copied, but it would be a natural stone look. You know, whether it's a cultured stone or an actual stone, it would have the appearance of a natural stone.
Nice, one to blend in with the surroundings then.
Right, and we tried to pick, we would probably pick two different types of stone. So, you know, you can get variations between the horizontal and those vertical elements.
But is it going to be white? I mean, we're.
No, it won't be white.
It'll be like slayed or something that would blend in?
Yeah, like natural river rock, natural stone that you would have on the, the lake.
Yeah, because it's, it's a deceiving rendering, it looks like you see white.
Yes.
The windows.
No, that's definitely not what.
In the garage and we're not, we're not into white anymore.
Exactly, and, and Mike, you know, I, you know, Mike is here, feel free also to talk about his intentions for the look. You know, we're, we're designing it, but we're following his cues and I think he can speak to his intentions too.
Yeah, you know, what we're trying to shoot for is, is a, you know, contemporary kind of home, but really pulling in the natural woods, quarry stone, natural rock. You know, as David said, part of the, the landscaping design will incorporate some steel, but it's a rusted steel, but it all really kind of fits within the environment that we're in. We don't want it to be cold, we want it to be more inviting and, and more natural like. So, you know, as David said, the, the rendering isn't exact, but it is, there's going to be a lot of very natural components to, to the exterior.
And we appreciate that, and the metal roof. Did you discuss or show on your plan and all how the water's going to come off the roof and how it's going to get collected?
I think if, if you go to any of the plans I can show you, any of Lucas's drawings.
I was at your site a couple of weeks ago and remarked how steep it was coming down that driveway. It'd be interesting there.
Yeah, there's, there's one drive that's pretty steep, so.
Yeah, and, and you're taking out the other one I see too.
Yeah, exactly.
Talk to me about the flat roof and what experience you've had with them, I've had some, so I'm curious.
Yeah, so the, you know, the sloping roofs, I guess they're not, you know, I'd, I'd have to get your roof plan, but basically they either slope to the east or the west. You know, the high points, but they're all pitched like a two-on-12 or, you know, a two-on-12 slope. So a very, you know, not aggressive slope, but a positive slope. And they kind of switch back, you know, like an X or butterfly. So they'll slope either to the road or to the lake, to simple gutters and taken to a downspout collectors around the edge and then taken to their rainwater collectors. Storm gear, the, over the roof, that'll also be sloping from the lakeside towards the garage and gutter line all across that, so it's very straightforward drainage.
But it's not flat, because it looks flat.
It'll, you know, flat is one-on-12. You know. So we're pretty confident that it's.
Are you confident that you can capture all that rainwater coming off of that new asphalt driveway around that corner?
So back to Lucas.
Yeah, we're, we're confident, there's, there's not a, a significant amount coming off the downside. A lot of it's being collected in the swell on the high side. Which is, which is where, you know, we're, we're focusing our, our drainage infrastructure on.
Right in there, right. Right to the left of that U shape. I saw a lot of erosion when I walked that driveway. With the tar, it's just going to be faster on the side, that's all.
Yeah, the, the beginning, the, the high side of the driveway where West Lake Road is, as Lucas had mentioned earlier, that culvert that goes underneath the beginning of the driveway has been plugged a few times and it's probably plugged again now. And when it gets like that, there, there's a lot of erosion that comes down along the lake and plugs it up. I've had to go in there myself a few times and shovel it out. When it gets plugged up, it just rolls down the driveway and that's why we want to make sure we improve that, that culvert through there with, you know, the, the, the county to make sure that we get it off into that, that creek that's on the other side.
Are you going to keep that bridge over there on the south side?
That's not my bridge, that's.
Oh, no.
Neighbor's bridge, yeah. Yep. So yes, to answer your question, we are going to keep the bridge.
One thing, if I could just real quick finish up with my part, if you can go back to the concept floor plan. One thing that'll help show is the scale. So you can see, you know, from that long elevation, it appears to be a big house. It, it is not a small house, but it, the scale of it, you see, we've only got living space. There's a living room, a kitchen and a study that face the lake there. So, and then in the lower levels are most of the bedrooms. And so, yeah, and that, right, so there's, and that's into the hill you can see. So we've, we've tried to not, to minimize the frontage on the lake by, you know, bringing a lot of living spaces on both levels and not trying to stretch it out from left to right. And as you can see, it's, the scale-wise, it's, it's a good-sized house, but it's not like it's incorporating a lot of rooms north to south to take up the whole width of the lot.
This is, this is Gary Humes. On your, your landscaping plan, I, I like what you've, what you've done there as coming off of West Lake Road, entering to the house. But I guess I got to say, I was a little disappointed that I didn't see very much landscaping at all on the lakeside. You know, a lot of, a lot of glasses we talked about, didn't know what the color was, a lot of stone, metal, it's a metal railings and, and I, I want to know if you'd consider, you know, some landscaping along, you know, on the, on the west or the east side to just kind of soften that a, a little bit? And, and why you didn't put any in there?
Yeah, I'll just mention that, that there are the, the three primary trees along the top of that ridge that we're preserving. And, you know, the, there's, there's not much else, else. much else, else there other than what comes down along the bank. Um, the existing home sits there and is coming out. Um, so there's not, there's not much there in terms of, of trees, um, in, in that lawn area. Um, and so the other element is that, you know, this is a, this is a lawn area and, uh, the trees that are there sort of frame it and create a flat usable area, um, on the lakeside. Um, so, but I, I, I guess that, that question would be, uh, for Mike, whether we're, we're open to, to providing any more, but I, I think that, you know, one of the things that, that we want to do is, is there's not a hesitation to, to provide the appropriate amount of plantings. Um, one of the things that we'll have to see is, is as we get out there and as this construction, uh, comes together, um, are, are more trees warranted? Is, is, would it be, would it be a good idea to, to provide more trees? And I think, I think that, that's what we're open to.
Yeah, the, the, the property itself, I mean, we've, I've owned it for a couple of years now and, you know, if you've had a chance to walk the property, it has been neglected for a number of years. I mean, when you walk through the property itself, there, there's a ton of vegetation that is either dying or dead and, you know, because there's so, so much vegetation there that things are getting choked out. So what we're trying to do is, is open it up a little bit while preserving and replanning a, um, a number of, um, pieces of landscaping so that we improve the aesthetic of it. And, you know, we will absolutely do some landscaping along the back of it, but I, you know, it's, it's a little bit difficult till we start, you know, kind of placing everything there to get to all of the individual elements. I wanted to, uh, be able to provide some, some visual protection from the road where possible, open up the, the, the lake view. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful view, you know, sitting a, a, a little bit up top and looking down at the lake, so I don't want it certainly obstructed, but as we get down on that lower level, we want to make sure that we've got some landscaping components that both fit the house and, um, the environment that, that we're in. And we just haven't, you know, decided fully on what's there. You know, when you look at that, that steep slope, there's a lot of, um, neglect that's been there over the years, stuff that's got to be cleaned out. And as we go through, you know, and clean out the, you know, what I call kind of the, the garbage vegetation, you know, all of the good stuff will get, you know, replanted and put in such a way that we're maintaining that steep slope and improving what's there.
Yeah, and, and I wasn't necessarily, uh, s- suggesting that it had to be, you know, trees, but, you know, even some of the exposed, uh, portions of the house, I, I don't know, Ryan, you can help me, but, you know, arborvitaries or, or, and then low shrubbery around, around some of the areas that are maybe the protecting the stairwell or some of the, some of the sharp, uh, more metal objects. I, I don't know, just something to, just so it's not, boom, a house.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And that's kind of what I'd like to see.
Yeah, we don't want that either. It's just, you know, um, trying to make sure that, you know, because when you look at the lower level, there's a bedroom down there for my, my dad who lives with us. He's eighty-four years old. Trying to give him a suite that, you know, he can live in, give him a space outside. So how do we give him that space and then give him some, you know, a little more privacy with some vegetation? And then how do we, you know, kind of protect that along the backside, you know, small patio area where there's a walkout and do it in such a way that, you know, we can have a fire pit and, you know, it's nice, but it's not, you know, all trees, it's, it, it aesthetically, you know, is pleasing from both the lakeside and the house side.
Okay, well, that'd be good. And then I guess the only que- other question I have is the little, you, you talked about the little, I'm not sure, accessory building, the storage shed, whatever you want to call it, that's, that's down there by the lake. What, what is, i- is there any rendering or what is that going to kind of look like from, from the lakeside?
So it's-
Go ahead, Lucas.
Yeah, it, uh, we don't have a rendering of, of what that's going to look like is the answer and it's, it, those details are, I, I would say still sort of being worked out. Um, but it's, it's going to be sort of a, a stone look similar to, to what we have in mind for the, for the stairway, um, to match, to, to, to match that stairway and to go along with it. Um, it'll be ten by ten and roughly ten feet tall as well and sort of sunk back into the, into the, um, the bank. I, I think the other thing that, that sort of goes along with your, your first comment as well is, is that there'll be, um, you know, some sort of a, a landscaping design to go along with that and the, and the bank as a whole to sort of, uh, complement that and, and make it look like a, a good, not just a, a storage shed that like is out there now, but, um, like a, like a nice structure that, that is, uh, useful for, for the boat equipment.
Yeah, what we're, what we want to try to accomplish is, is creating that, the storage shed that is, is both useful, but it's not kind of the first thing that you see when you look at the shoreline of the house, right? We want to, we're, we're trying to kind of tuck it back into the land itself and that's why we looked at bringing, you know, the, uh, the landing of the stairs on the roof itself so that it's, it's less noticeable in terms of it being in, uh, on the property itself. And when you look at the existing structure that's there, when you pull up, you know, we drive, um, take a boat up along the lakeside, it's the first thing you see. And what we're trying to do is, is eliminate that, that something back into the, the soil itself so that it's not, um, it's not extremely visible, but at the same time, it has some utility.
Okay, thank you.
Are you replacing the dock and?
Yeah, our, our plan is to, um, to, um, submit another plan, I guess, for a, a two-dock boat lift.
Uh-huh.
You know, we just haven't, you know, kind of finalized that piece of it and, and likely incorporating, um, part of what is there already, but we haven't finalized it. But, you know, it is, it is on the list of things us do, for us to do, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Lucas, it's, it's, um, it's separate from this submission here.
Yeah, and that, that was one of Lance's comments that, that I'll be addressing on the plan is just noting that that will require it's own-
Could you incorporate the storage shed design and details, uh, as part of that application? Or is your intent to build that prior to redoing the dock?
The, the stair in the shed are part of this application.
Okay, and the tram.
Yeah.
Well, we've approved the trams before I was here, but I, I have to say, they, they give me the absolute shakes, uh, with young children because they're, they're easy to fall down. I don't know, I, I don't know if there's any alternatives like an S-shaped driveway or something to get down to the lake.
I'll, I'll note that we did look at, at path options down to the lake and it is very difficult and, and obviously very invasive to the bank itself.
Well, you had the steps.
Frankly, that was my first option. That was one of the first things that I wanted to see. And, and part of that is because of my, my dad. I mean, him trying to get down to the lake, you know, walking down, there's a few stairs there that's difficult for him to do. Um, so having, you know, giving him the ability to, to get in an ATV and kind of drive down and whatever is something that we wanted to try to accomplish, but, you know, as Lucas pointed out, it was extremely invasive and, and, you know, really kind of cost prohibitive to do. And so we elected to go with a, you know, modern, newly, you know, new tram and, you know, he can get up and down and, and, you know, I think with the, you know, today's safety features on, on the trams, we can lock it out for the kids and so on and, you know, hopefully my grandkids at some point here, um, so that, you know, we can, we can protect them.
Okay.
Anybody else from the board? Uh, just looking at, uh, the shoreline guidelines, we, we've been talking, we've been talking around them. Um, I know Marathon submitted a, a letter, uh, you, as you said, Lucas, you didn't get into the details of the landscaping along the lakeside. I, I think what we'll do there is just condition our approval on some shrubbery and I know, uh, I, I know Michael and Lan- uh, Lucas, that, uh, they've been using more switchgrass and just enough to put some green across the front of the property. And, uh, we're, we certainly don't want to block your view because it is a gorgeous view of the lake, but in the same regard, we've got to, uh, consider what, what the, what the property looks like from the lakeside. So that's, that's why we get into that. So we'd certainly ask for you to, uh, your deliberation on that. Uh, the county planning board, uh, was not required to look at this. Uh, I know Tyler Ollie has, uh, looked at the existing leach field and he seems to feel that, uh, since it was, uh, built in two thousand seventeen, that certainly would take the, uh, what you're proposing.
It has to be inspected anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, would have to be inspected because of our regulations regarding septic systems.
Okay.
Um, Jim Fletcher had a question on the size of the lateral. Uh, I think you're proposing an inch and a half water surface?
And, and we'll be reducing that to one per his comment, yeah.
So you'll submit with that. Lance, I know you, you, you had quite a, quite a letter. I don't know if, uh, Lucas had that chance to respond to those, those concerns or issues that you brought up, uh, anything there that we should, uh, be aware of and point out and bring to the board's attention?
Uh, we, we talked a little bit about, you know, um, all of the elements that are being shown, whether or not they're part of this application or not. So I think that, that was some clarity requirements on that. Um, we did have a couple of questions on the retaining walls, making sure that the tops and bottoms were identified. It's, it's typical that we can get a, a detail, um, provided, uh, uh, prior to signatures of plans to make sure that we have the design of that retaining walls that are being proposed. Um, we mimic some of, uh, Jim Fletcher's comments regarding water, uh, to the site. Um, we do have some questions or have some questions on sequence of construction, uh, making sure that we're stabilizing as we go. We do commend the applicant and, and the design engineers as they are utilizing much of the existing site as it is, uh, trying to reduce where they can in terms of disturbance. They're only proposing twenty-eight thousand square feet. I, I don't mean to say only, but it's typical on these types of projects, we've had more. Um, and I think they've done a pretty good job trying to reduce what they could. Um, we do have some questions on the, on the rain gardens as proposed. Uh, just want confirmation the size is adequate. So we did ask for some calculations to be provided to justify how much of that volume is actually getting there, make sure that we have enough size for them. Um, but ultimately I believe that they're, they're, they're compliant in that regards, but we, we do need to see that information prior to a, a final pool from our office.
Yeah, absolutely.
Number twenty, whoop, before you jump, uh, numerous areas of steep slopes are not shown as receiving steep slope treatment. I guess that was the last thing I wanted to talk about, uh, to make sure that everybody was comfortable and there was compliance with our steep, steep slope requirements. Uh, I think most of the slopes are shown as to how they're being treated.
Yeah, so if I may, I think, I think most of the areas that they show it are along the driveway and I think where we were kind of reflecting is some of the, um, some additional areas, uh, along the banks on the, on the downward side of the site to be also provided with that steep slope protection.
Yeah, yeah, it was delineated with a hatch, um, but, but there's some areas, uh, as noted that need that hatch to be shown on the plan, so we'll be adding that.
Yeah, thank you. This is Ryan, uh, pardon me. Um, so that was going to be my comment to Gary when it comes to the, the disturbances that we're about to see with the erosion and, and if we can get grasses, uh, established, that is our best, um, protection against erosion. Trees are wonderful, they're big and wonderful. I love them very, very much. They're beautiful. Grasses develop mats and help protect against erosion. So if we can kind of beef that up a, a little bit, I, I guess, if, is that what we're asking for Chuck? Like grasses at the tops of the slopes? I, I, I'm maybe-
Well, we're asking for protection that they're not, not exposed, whether it be grass or some other kind of ground cover, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the steep slope protection that's being proposed and that's where, what we're asking for on these steep slope areas will help, um, allow for the, the potential of grass and other forms of vegetation to grow in that area and it will help it stabilize it much sooner than, let's say if they didn't choose to put the matting down.
Yeah, and that, quite frankly, that'll actually fit with the aesthetic of the house. You know, we, and the, the home that I live on currently here on West Lake, we've incorporated a lot of grasses here and that's something that we're going to want to do here. It's, it's something that we like.
Yeah, we love it.
And so we're going to want to make sure as we work through that final landscaping plan, that we actually do incorporate that into the, the steep slope itself. So we get it.
Lucas, uh, the driveway up at, uh, CR sixteen, is, is that the existing driveway existing with, or are you widening it a little bit? I see you're replacing the culvert.
Yeah, it's, it's widened and, and sort of reradiused slightly, um, which, which will be reviewed by the county. Um, and it's also flattened out too, that the actual apron currently is at twenty percent slope. Um, so we've brought that up to four.
It's a little hairy coming out of that driveway right now.
And what is the slope of the driveway?
The average slope is eight percent.
Oh, okay.
Um, it does have some steeper areas, but those are, as, as I mentioned, to accomplish those flatter areas and, uh, and they're much below some of the slopes that are out there. Now, the existing driveway, I measured, uh, some areas over thirty percent.
And you have good, flat pullout area up at the road.
Right.
So you're not on a hill tram. How's your site distance?
Site distance is good, it should be on the plan.
Yeah.
It's not, that's something we got to work in.
Okay. Doesn't show it, but I can see it. And you're going to replace the driveway culvert?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if you're, if you're on town road, the town would do it, but, uh, being you're on a county road, they say, we'll give you a permit and have at it, right? It's all on your dime. Uh, okay, I think, uh-
Chuck, was there anything about the fire department?
Excuse me?
Anything about the fire department? Did they say anything about the-
They did not. Nothing was, no comments back from Cheshire.
Um, one, just one last thing for me. Um, I just wanted to thank the applicants for working with the town's historical committee. Apparently there's some artifacts from the, uh, existing house that they're going to allow the town to, uh, to come in and, and take. And I think, uh, that's really cool that we, uh, preserve the kind of history, the historical significance of this, uh, of this lot. So, uh, I want to thank the applicants for, for allowing the town to come and gather some of those things and, and work with our, our committee.
Yeah, you're welcome. We're happy to do it.
Yeah.
And Mike, uh, knowing your profession, I'm sure you'll try to, uh, reuse and recycle as much of the material from the house before it's, or as it's being demolished?
Yeah, we're actually trying to figure out how much of, um, what's in the house, the floorboards and wallboards and, and, um, uh, wall joists and those kinds of things that we can potentially incorporate into the new house, but we just haven't, you haven't got that far yet. I mean, it's, it's, it's a real difficult kind of thing to do because, you know, unfortunately there's a number, um, a number of parts of the house that, um, have been insect infested over the years. And, you know, we, we just got to pick through it, make sure we pick the right parts, I guess, is, is what I come out to.
Okay. I'm glad I taught you well in recycling restored. Alrighty, uh, yeah, I, that was one of the things I had from the historian, Sarah Linda was very thankful for, uh, those items that were presented. Uh, we did go over the MRB list. Uh, county public works didn't respond, but, uh, Lucas, you said that you'll have to contact them and I, I sure have to get a permit from them for the driveway reconfiguration. Uh, we did not hear back from Kevin Alveney. And, uh, with all that being said, I think we've covered everybody. Anybody else on the board have any questions before we move to, uh, Seeker?
I don't have any questions, um, but I, I think that in response to the, the previous applicant, that we could add a condition that before the building permits approved, that we just have the okay of Tyler. It's kind of the same comment he had. And then, uh, with that, I'll make a motion to approve, um, um, Seeker, put that up on the web.
PN zero-two-zero-zero-three-eight.
Nice, thank you, Robert. And also the site plan approval with, um, how many conditions are we talking now? Eight? Is that, would that be nine then?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
I just want to change probably.
Well, let, let me, let me, can I discuss that? Cause I think, I mean, the last ones, I think, a little bit- Because I think, I mean, the last ones, I think, a little bit different because we know that there's a brand new septic system that has to go in, you know, to a fairly steep slope area. I mean, this, the septic system we're talking about here was just redone in 2017. They're basically using it all over again. I I would be fine with the way it is right now, which says, you know, prior to issuance of a COO.
Agreed.
That we that we review the existing system and we get it compliant because they're not really developing a new one. They're just using the one that's there. So that's, so I would be fine with the way we have the condition set right now. That's my, that's my opinion. I'll go back to the rest of the board.
But Gary, I guess, and I hear where you're going, but in in this comment, what happens if it comes back and it cannot support the residents given the limited space? And they have to develop a brand new one, like in the site, all the site has to be.
Well, then they don't get a COO. I mean, they don't get a COO until they they can't move in until it gets done.
Okay, but I would have said the same thing for the the last comment. I'm just trying to be.
Well, that's true, but I guess it's it from a from a site plan perspective, the other one, we didn't know if that if the design that's on the site plan was going to be consistent with the new design septic system. I I feel pretty confident that this septic system was already changed over to support a four bedroom residence. It was approved, you know, three years ago. I I I see somewhat little risk that there's going to be a chat, a problem with it, but that's my personal opinion.
I agree with you, Gary. I think it's two different issues. I think the other one, we were much concerned about the the design and whether the system could be built into the side of the hill. Here we have an existing system. I think it's just a matter of having inspected and signed off by Tyler. And it would be good to go.
Okay, I'm just I'm just like, for the record, that the the sentence almost reads more restrictive from Tyler. But I'm not going to, I mean, it seems like if you get, you guys are fine with it. I'm trying, just trying to be consistent for the applicants and and show consistency. But I understand that they're different situations. But if the office cautions the town granting approval that the existing onsite wastewater system can support the proposed residence, given the limited space. And so, I mean, if the town, if the board's okay with that, I'll move forward. I'll rescind my motion and let and let someone else make a motion to that.
Okay, Ryan's withdrew his motion. Somebody else want to make a motion on the seeker and the site plan as a package?
All right, I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and do that. I'll make a motion to approve seeker as a type two action and approve a single stage site plan for CPN 20-038, subject to the eight conditions as stated in the resolution.
I second that. Have a second? Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? I opposed.
I will oppose that, Chuck.
Okay, so it's.
Supposition.
Now, read the vote is is for one, so it is approved. Good luck to the Hessens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lucas and Dave and and, yeah, I guess you'll be coming back with the the doc at some point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right.
Alrighty, moving right along. Where are we? 7:30 already? God, time flies when you have fun. All right, I'm looking for JNT Properties, who is the owner of property at 5290 North Street, seeking single stage site plan approval for the construction of a storage building designed by Venneti Associates. So I assume Anthony, you're the lead dog on this?
Yes, I am.
Hey, Mark.
Okay, so the project in hand is a is a storage facility. It's pretty straightforward. It's a storage facility behind a a couple of different automotive, two automotive facilities and the old Potter HVAC building. It's right next to a set of storage facilities on the west. There is, it's kind of pinched on that if you're looking at the existing conditions plan right now, it's it's in that section, that triangular section, just just west of the the pond and just east of the that that west of the property line. The goal here is for stormwater retention is typically what we like to use. We didn't get into the retention pond that's there because it was specifically designed for the project to the southeast for the asphalt drive and those, the machine shop and the automotive shop. So we didn't really want to get into that and and kind of open that pond up and expand it. It's working properly the way it is. So what we're proposing is a couple of infiltration trenches. And then on the south side of the building, if you look at the site plan, is going to be like a gravel pave structure with some retention under the under the gravel driveway. So it'll be a geo grid type structure on top with with gravel underneath it. And that's what we'll use for our storage area for enhanced phosphorus because we are in the Sucker Brook watershed there. And this this just a, it's just a storage barn. The the owners have a management facility that they use and that they run. And things will be stored in there like snowplow equipment, lawn mowing equipment and things of that nature. Are there any questions?
I know I saw that there was a a a letter of endorsement or approval or or whatever you want to call it from the neighboring property. Is that the one that's directly to the south there, right next to?
It's 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 directly to the west because of the orientation of the drive. Yes, directly down.
That was that one that was right there next.
Yes, that's a Bulldog Management that they they run a store, a mini storage facility on their property. So it's kind of, you know, it's just going to be another barn and with with the other barns that are currently there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was that.
Yeah.
Because that's the closest, that's the closest that it it is to anybody. I want to make sure those same people that said yes.
Correct, yes. And that that letter was for the planning, but also for the zoning because we did get a zoning variance to encroach upon that side setback.
Is the property line that's unencumbered, or the property line where the 8.25 feet setback, is that unencumbered by any fence or?
Yeah, there's nothing there. There's a gravel driveway that runs parallel with the, that accesses some of the buildings in the back for the for the for the management company that runs the storage facility.
Okay, just going back team to our concerns with buildings close to property lines and fire. Board members, any questions?
The climate comment you had about fire, I don't have a problem with that because it's a steel building.
Little mowers could catch fire.
Yeah.
It's also quite a ways away from the other buildings to the west, so.
And it is a vacant lot. I went and looked at it. It's just flat.
Right.
I I guess along those lines, I'll ask, is there any intent to store flammable, you know, large quantities of gasoline?
There won't be any internal storage of any any harsh chemicals. It'll be mostly just equipment.
Whatever's in equipment, okay.
There won't be like a fuel tank in there really.
Yeah, okay.
Is it a gravel floor or a concrete?
Be concrete.
Okay.
This is Ryan. If Lance doesn't have any issues with this from an engineering perspective, industrial zoning, I feel like this is a good good use. I'm ready to move forward on this.
I am too.
I agree. Lance, you did question whether a SWIP was needed?
Not so much needed. I think, I I believe what they're proposing to do would be compliant with our regulations. Anything over 20,000 square foot of disturbance requires requires mitigation measures to be provided and they're provoked, they're proposing several. And with the existing stormwater facility there to handle it, I I think we're covered from stormwater compliance. I think one of the main questions that we had, both with staff and reflected in the MRB comment is just, is this site have legal access to this property? Is there an existing easement? Is there existing agreement in hand we can add added? Just want to make sure that we have legal access to the site, regardless of they're the same owner or not. Just didn't know, being it's a separate parcel.
As part, when we did, when we did the the initial submittal, we talked with the development office and they they suggested that we do put in a right of way. And we've talked with, just to clean up that one entry, if you go back to the site plan, I believe it is, there's a note that we're proposing. It might be on the existing conditions plan, maybe. We are proposing that we clean up, you could see it, a right of way. Because right now, there is access on our piece, but you kind of do have to go off it a little bit. That it'll clean up the entry access for both parcels in the end. So we are proposing to make sure there is proper access, not just for that back one, but all all parties that kind of touch these these lots.
And all utility easements? I know you're showing the gas line.
All utility easements have been shown.
Yeah.
What about the relocation of the water line?
It it we do have an updated plan. Eric will send it over. We're relocating that slightly.
And with this drainage here, does that come from Bulldog Management over here?
Well, honestly, we've we've tried to find the end of that and the, it's just a pipe that's been buried. There's really no flow through it at all. It's, we we went out there and we tried to find it. There's really no, it was something that's been there and I couldn't find the inlet to it. I can do a little bit more digging around just to make sure.
What pipe are we referring to?
It's that 12-inch HDP that goes from Bulldog.
From the pond out.
It's just the the inlet is buried somewhere and it, I mean, it really doesn't do much.
Yeah.
There was, I mentioned somewhere about hazardous waste on this site or was in the past. I I don't remember, I don't, I don't recall where it was. It was it was in PRC. It wasn't in your letter, right, Lance?
No, it's it's reflected in the EA that was provided. So what happens when you fill out? When, yeah, when you fill that out and you pick your location, DC automatically fills in anything that's within the proximity of your project site. So I think because of its location on North Road or off of where it's located, there was a history at one of the sites that had some previous discharges that are being remediated or have been remediated.
Okay, so it doesn't apply to the site itself?
Correct.
Okay, third parties, ZBA did approve the reduced setback on the 21st. Chris Jensen had a concern about the easements and that's what Eric had mentioned. We reviewed the MRB letter. The county planning board, I mean, they they sort of deferred to the solid waste district. No, they deferred to the soil, soil conservation. It was a very cryptic letter, so I, it was only comments, they had no no approval, nay or yea. So that's, I guess that's where we sit with the county. Did you see those comments, Anthony?
Yeah, but like you said, there are.
Little catchbacks, I consider existing still fencing on the southern property line. All right, well, take them under advisement.
We will.
Fire chief, no comment. City of Canadegwa, Rick Brown wrote back and said he was okay with what's being done. Talked about the purpose, setback, with the storm management, hazardous waste. What'd I miss? Anything? Okay, if not, this is, excuse me?
I was just going to say my only comment, and it was, it's it's in the, before we get into it, it's in the resolution that the the code enforcement officer comments be addressed. And I was wondering, are they are they any different than the comments that came from the towns engineers?
I think Chris was focused on the easements being showed or needed either.
He wants, I'm sorry, Chuck.
Chris Jensen. Oh.
Yeah, he was.
There it is.
He was mainly concerned with getting proper access to the site in a form of an easement. And also, as reflected with Anthony's comments earlier, and also with any other easements located on the site. So I, so I guess I, I guess we've got that comment. It's, and I know we're kind of jumping to the resolution here, but that was comment number, condition number five, but then you've got condition number eight, which says legal access should be provided. Are they the same? Is that the same comments? I'm wondering if we need all those comments or conditions.
Well, seeing that Chris's only concern was the easements, the legal access, we could probably take, why don't we take number five out? And leave and leave the more detailed description of what we're looking for as far as the. Okay, so again, let's get back to the seeker. It is an unlisted action. So it has a type one that was submitted by Anthony and Lance prepared the part two and the part three. I don't think there was anything, any concern or substance there that we'd have to discuss. So I would look for a a motion and we can do a bundled motion on this also for both the seeker unlisted action as well as the site plan approval.
I'll make a motion. Right, is it okay that we add a condition about the water line thing that was, that seemed to be the biggest issue?
You're making a motion. You can do it, Ryan.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve CPN 20-040 site plan or there should be a seeker.
All right, roll into it.
Yeah, okay, I got to jump with you.
All right, this is, sorry, the next one down.
Keep going.
I'm going to bundle them, okay? And I'm thinking.
Sure.
If we can have a condition about the town of Farmington water approving that water line.
Yep.
Lance, is that all right? Is that appropriate, everybody, I think?
Right, no, you, yep, no, you're correct, Ryan. I agree with you.
Lance, isn't, I, from the information that we have, I believe it's a privately owned line. It's not owned, it's not. From just everything that I've talked to, the owner and the owner to the south, the owner to the west, that hydrant and everything is privately privately like owned and maintained.
Yeah, I I don't disagree with you, Anthony. I think you're correct. But just to cover us and the town, I'm just going to suggest that they, that we just make sure that Canadegwa Farmington Water District doesn't have any concerns with its, whatever the changes are being proposed.
All right, I just wanted to make a note of it.
Okay, yeah, so maybe it's not, maybe it's not, you know, maybe a condition that it's okay to move the water line from the appropriate authority, something like that. And then I'll make a motion to approve seeker CPN 20-040, determination of non-significant resolution and the site plan site plan with eight.
10.
10 conditions for the 5290 North Street.
I I apologize, Ryan. We did remove one, so you're correct. It would be nine.
The CEO one and then the one about the water would be added.
Right.
Do I have a second?
I'll, Gary will second that.
A motion from Ryan and second from Gary to approve both the seeker and the site plan for JNT Property. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. They're off and running. All right, moving along. Where's my agenda? All right, we're ready to talk. Anthony, you're up again, representing Connor and Chelsea, Diction Swabble, owners of property at, to be to be numbered at some point, Lake Hill Drive. And they're seeking a single stage site plan approval for the construction of a single family dwelling, a pool house, accessory structures and associated improvements. The Diction Swabbles went before the ZBA last week, got their. The Dixon Schwabell's went before the ZBA last week, got their variance. So they're here to talk to us tonight, so who, uh, who is representing the applicant?
All three, the architect, myself and the, um, the applicant are all here tonight, I believe the architect's gonna start into it, Pete, if you're there.
Hi Pete.
You're muted. You're still seen or muted Pete?
Speak up Pete.
You can't hear me when I'm muted, can you? Um, what I was saying, sorry about that, Connor and Chelsea, the, the owners, I believe are still on the line, but, uh, they wanted to just quickly address the board before we got into this, so Connor, are you there?
I am, thanks Pete, um, just wanted to briefly, I'll keep this very brief, uh, just thank you all for accepting this on the agenda this evening and, uh, just wanted to thank Pete and Anthony for all their hard work to get us to this point, but, um, the property that we own is, you'll be more familiar with it as the barrel property. It was the last two sections of the Lake Hill Drive, which I think was previously approved for about 30 homes-ish in that neighborhood. And our goal is to put one home, our forever home, where my wife Chelsea and I can, um, begin to raise our family, come back to the Canadegwa community where I grew up. Uh, we're also very interested in sustainability and giving back and protecting the land. Actually have a meeting with Max and Becky from the Land Trust, uh, tomorrow to explore those options as well. But that's enough about us and, and the property, I'll kick it over to the experts Pete and Anthony to take it from here.
Uh, thank you Connor and, uh, good evening everyone, um, yeah, so we are here to discuss the property at 000 Lake Hill Drive. And, uh, just so you can get a kind of overview, this is a rear, uh, elevation of, of the house that we're proposing. Eric, if you would, please, uh, go to the next slide. Um, and to give you a little context into where we are talking, um, Lake Hill Drive off of West Lake Road or County Road 16, uh, right before you get to Foster Road, their property, uh, the Dixon Schwabell's is the property all the way at the end of Lake Hill Drive. And as Connor mentioned, it's almost an 80 acre parcel and at one point there was, uh, I believe 32, uh, properties, uh, zoned for this parcel and we are now just gonna do one single-family home at the top, being the goal, uh, of privacy for, um, both Connor and Chelsea. Uh, if you could go to the next one please Eric. To give you a little bit more insight, here's the property kind of close up, um, just, just kind of speaking in generality of, of why we're choosing to put the, the building where we are, um, you can see in the green circle, it's kind of what we deemed as our prime building envelope, um, and the driveway kind of swooping towards the west and then up towards the north coming around the house, um, proper, and we did that for privacy reasons as I mentioned before, um, when Connor and Chelsea come up to this property, they want to feel like they're in their kind of own environment, they don't want to see the neighbors, they don't want to hear roads or, or minimal, uh, road traffic as much as possible and, and kind of be one with their property and, and kind of their natural setting. Access to the site, this, this kind of is one of the previously cleared sections. Uh, as you start to move west on this property, uh, most of it is very, very well-treed, there's a few goalies as you can see by the topography, uh, same with going to the north, so, you know, trying to minimize the disturbance of, of what is already there as much as possible. Um, and then views, we are trying to obtain some dress, uh, dramatic views of Canadegwa Lake down the south, down toward the south, um, and also access, uh, solar, solar gain and daylighting, and then like I mentioned, maintaining the natural landscape as much as possible. Uh, if you go to the next one please Eric. A little bit more close up of where we are with the site, um, as we can see the driveway as it swoops kind of towards the east and then around to the north, um, and coming at what, what's kind of deemed the, the front door of the house, uh, we don't really feel there's a front, back or side to this home, um, the brown being the house proper in the garage itself, um, the grays be either driveway or hardscape surfaces and then the blue areas being the semi-detached pool house structure, which Chuck had mentioned that we were, um, granted the variance last week, um, to be able to put a bathroom inside and then the pool itself. So it's kind of being developed as more of a family retreat style development, it's pretty low line, linear programmatic, uh, design in terms of, um, shape and like I said, we want to be as private as possible and just kind of giving you one reference, we are roughly plus or minus 272 feet from our closest property line, um, so we don't feel like we're gonna be intruding on anybody. Next slide please. And here's just a couple, uh, views to give you the, the overall feel of where we're going, we're doing, like you said, a low line, kind of linear structure, a little bit more into that modern farmhouse, contemporary, um, craftsman vibe, we're gonna be using a multitude of materials where we've got stone veneer kind of anchoring, anchoring the buildings to the landscape as well as kind of being that long linear low material. Uh, we've got some elements of vertical siding, probably board and batten in a mix of vertical siding itself and then the majority of it will actually be a, uh, horizontal siding with quite a bit of windows, um, looking out at the views and, and obtaining the, uh, daylighting that we're looking to do. So this is a southeast elevation and then next slide please Eric. And here is what would be more of a northwest elevation, looking at the front door, uh, the garage, again, the materialities that we're, um, looking to do, but again, kind of keeping it low to the, uh, to the landscape, uh, really we only have second floor over the bedroom wing, which would be kind of that most, uh, eastern wing of the building and, um, kind of, uh, attaching it to the, to the landscape as much as possible. Uh, one thing just to mention to you all, um, you know, usually we've been here in the past and when we're working on the lake, we'll come in with a full-blown landscape plan, but to mention to you guys, we do have Sue Steele on board, which we have worked with her many times in the past, uh, with projects in front of you. She will be working on the landscape design with us, um, and she, as you know, she's very professional in terms of what she's doing in selecting of plants and really adhering to kind of the natural aesthetic that Canadegwa has as, as well as the native species, to give you just a little bit of sense of that. Um, and from there, I will pass it over to Anthony and he can kind of explain site grading, drainage, um, things and, and we can answer any questions.
Okay, um, so, starting with, um, grading, what we're doing with the driveway, you know, the driveway is rather, it's, it's rather long and, um, some of the comments that, um, came up were a few turnoff for emergency purposes, so about halfway up, you could see on the west side of the driveway, we were providing a turnoff for emergency vehicles. Um, it's the standard length and width, um, for the driveway length and then also on the north side of the property, we are um, also adding another turnaround because the length of the driveway is rather long, um, requirements, um, have us install a couple different, um, turnarounds and access, so emergency vehicles can get back and forth. Um, on the west side of the driveway, we'll have a grass-lined swell, um, in some of the steeper areas, we will be using check dams, um, just to slow water down and disperse it a little bit more, but for the most part, it'll be grass-lined swells to kind of get water into those swells and have it infiltrate as it, as it flows down the driveway. Around the house, the most, some of the, um, the roof leaders will be directed into a rain garden as well as that, the majority of the pavement around the house, we go into a rain garden in that centralized cir-, um, circle that is for the autocourt. But mostly the stuff on the south side will go to a splash block and it'll, we have definitely enough room for some sheet flow to be absorbed and go, and be absorbed into the grass, because the, most of the, um, the natural vegetation on here is, is a grassy, um, brushy area, so we believe that most of the sheet drainage will, will get absorbed pretty quickly into, into the surrounding areas. During construction, we're proposing, um, a, a temporary sediment basin. Typically, it's like we saw the one that we're proposing on North Manteeth, um, it's just a three-foot drainage basin that will catch all the, um, the stormwater off during construction and then there's a riprap spreader that'll kind of, if we do have a big event, it'll, it'll overflow and then it'll sheet drain across that, across the current vegetation that is there. We do have a long utility corridor going down to tie into all public utilities that are offered at the end of Lake Hill Drive, there's water, sewer, gas and electric all there. So that'll be standard, it's just a pretty much a straight run down to tie into all those, um, existing stubs that were put in for the barrel stuff division. That's pretty much it on site design, if there's any questions, um, I can answer them.
Anthony, where's the closest fire hydrant?
Well, the fire hydrant is down, it is down, um, along Lake Hill Drive. It might be a little bit farther down, I'd have to, I'd have to double check that.
Is there any requirement as far as distance from hydrant to structure? Maximum dis-, I, I, I don't know the fire code, but, I mean, it could affect furniture, uh, insurance rates, I, uh, and I don't know what this distance is, it's the crow flies. I guess they have to lay the hose.
It's about 670 feet.
Okay. 675. Well, I mean, I, I don't know if anybody's here to answer that question, but it was just something I thought of regarding distance from hydrant to structure.
Chuck, this is Lance with MRB Group, now there's no additional requirements for fire flow for residential structure of this magnitude.
I, I know Jim brought up the concern about pressure, because this is apparently at the, uh, the summit of the, uh, of the line and given the flow restrictions they're having at Kramer Road until it gets, you know, the new tower, uh, gets put in and pumps, uh, I guess Jim was just pointing out that it's, it's minimal.
Yeah, I think the, the major concern is that during a fire situation, what that would do to this property. So there, there's some suggestions in Jim's letter, the water superintendent's letter back to both the property owner, um, the applicant, excuse me, about putting in a check valve at the house, which would help during fire flow situations down below.
Is the house gonna be sprinkled or, uh, is it?
There's no plans of it.
Okay. Jim also had some concerns about separating the gas and the electric lines, making sure there's a enough clearance that, uh, if one line had to be worked on, the other line wouldn't be compromised.
Yeah, there'll be enough clearance there, we're just kind of showing that we're using one large corridor to, there'll be a minimum separation between the two that, um.
The ridge line, uh, where is in relation to our ridge line out there?
So with, with regards to the ridge line, it's to the west of the actual ridge itself. And when we're talking about views from other areas, maybe on the, the east side of the lake or the lake, you know, having this large home, you know, dominating the skyline on that side, we do have a large hedgerow that separates, if you, just to the east of the, um, the property, the proposed house location, you could see that green line, there is a large mature growth hedgerow there that kind of separates that, most of those, those trees are gonna stay intact, there are a couple gaps in it, but for the most part, it'll be protected, um, that views line will be protected by that hedgerow.
So the ridge line is just to the east?
Yeah, just we're to the west of the ridge line, we're not on the ridge line itself.
Yeah, I guess when Barrow was proposing the, uh, 32 lots, uh.
It was all developed there, the whole.
It was all developed, but I think we had, yeah, I think we'd put it, made sure that house, the house for that lot boys was to the west, so it would be off the ridge line, okay, there's the ridge line right there.
Yeah. So we are to the west of it. Trying to get onto that more of a, more of a gradual slope, so we don't have to do, um, a lot of grading around the house.
This is Ryan here, uh, this place looks gorgeous, uh, what a great place to have your forever house. I'm glad that the zoning board gave you the pool house zoning thing. Uh, this, this project is a win for conservation and a win for environmental stewardship. And I think it's a win for, uh, home, um, you know, the occupation that I read in the emails and I'm, I'm ready to make a motion on this, I think it's good as if, if there's no issues with Lance and, and Eric, I have no issues and I'm ready to move forward.
Anybody else have a glowing endorsement?
I agree, it's a beautiful house, it's a beautiful location.
Guys, it's a great lot, you have great neighbors. I live behind you. The, uh, Connor, you had mentioned the Land Trust, uh, what was your thoughts there regarding some of the, I guess, the, uh, area up the hill, so to speak? Were you thinking about merging, uh, considering it not a donation, but a, whatever?
Yeah, at this point, we're considering all options, um, as most recently, I'm sure you guys are aware that the, the lot, very large lot, um, to the north of us from the Cooks is for sale as well. So, uh, we were under the impression that that field was actually part of the Whitefield's original PDR, application way back when, learned that wasn't the case recently, so, um, we're actually more recently exploring what that field could do to add to our property. You know, we, my, my wife is, um, very, uh, involved with animals, she, she has great plans potentially to, um, put livestock there or something down the road, so we'll see.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Uh, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, with that comment, John, can you please add to the comments? Maybe this is a great project to, uh, that the town open space committee, uh, or the open space and the EAB could partner with the Dixon Schwabell's on potential support, um, for conservation of the, of that property they were just speaking of.
Thank you.
John Robitella?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, thank you, I'll make a motion, uh, for a type two seeker and site plan approval for CPN uh, 20-041, uh, Lake Hill Drive for Connor and Chelsea Dixon Schwabell and site plan with how many conditions, I think it was seven, 12, 11? 11 conditions?
Second.
Correct, 11, 11 conditions.
And you have the P and R fee, right? Parking rec.
Parking rec fee.
Yep, parking rec's on there.
Okay. All right, uh, and who gave the second, I'm sorry?
Karen.
Oh, thank you Karen.
Question real quick.
Sure, oh, yeah, we're get, get moving along quickly, so if we're slow as ever, you need to.
Condition 10, no construction issued until dedication of utilities.
Oh, yes.
We don't have, without dedication of that roadway, there isn't a town-owned road there. And so that roadway has to be dedicated to the town, which I don't believe it has as of yet.
I think right now it only goes to EA.
And I believe that was a carryover condition from the subdivision approval.
Yes, we talked about that, yes, I think so.
Is the road in?
The road is in and the hammerhead was built to town standard, so everything's been done.
Right, I don't, I don't, for the board's concerns, I don't, I don't believe it, it's really anything to do with, with, uh, the quality of the work or, or whether or not there's issues out there, I think it's just we haven't, the town hasn't officially received all the requirements that they need to receive in order to dedicate that.
Right, and I believe one of the, if I remember correctly, uh, Chris had mentioned last time, because there was an issue. Chris had mentioned last time, because there was an issue, right, with the ownership of the weight, or the form management retention area there, and they've got to get that one. But Chris seemed to indicate that he, he was, he was optimistic that that was going to get resolved quickly.
That has been resolved.
It has been resolved. The town is going to take, uh, the management of that pond. And for the record, as far as what the condition was on the last one, the permits, uh, for lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine were not to be issued, which lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine were, where are they? The two on the north side, these two, I believe.
Okay.
It was not in reference to the Dixon Schwabel house.
But there was a house that was already built that, there's already a house there on the, the last one. So how was, I'm just kind of wondering how that got happened. That happened and it wasn't an issue then.
I know. Without a dedicated road and the, the, there shouldn't be any CFOs off of the road.
Well, there is.
Right, so many properties are being built. Need to have it dedicated.
Lot twenty-two has got a guy living in it with a CFO.
That's outside of my control.
No, I'm just, I know it's up there, you know, we did some work for the guy, so I know there is a guy with a CFO off of Lake Hill Drive, and it's the last house on the left, the last approved one.
What's holding up the dedication? Is it?
Main and finally, and final sign-off from Jim. I believe they have all the record drawings and stuff like that done.
I believe you're correct, Eric, there. I think we've, we've, we've approved the easements. I believe we've approved the record drawings. I believe that the attorney's still reviewing the legal documentation. I'm not quite sure if he's authorized that or not. And you're right, Jim Fletcher's concerns and comments still are out there. So I, I, I don't think there's anything major there. I'm just saying, my concern is, is if this continues to take as long as it has taken, which has been over, I don't know, a year and a half, and these guys build a house and they're looking to move in, I, I don't know what would happen. You're going to have to hold up a CFO technically for them to move in. And then now, now we have another problem. So I think it'd be better if we can get the dedication done now before we authorize another construction on a non-dedicated road that's supposed to be dedicated to the town. And I, it's my understanding that barrels are trying to get out. So if they're trying to leave and we don't have dedication done, who's, who's then left to hold? To hold that?
I don't think anybody disagrees with Lance. I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, from the conversations I had with the town, the last thing, the last thing that was holding up any kind of final approvals for, um, this project would have been the pond issue, which has been resolved. We didn't realize that there was a road issue as well.
For the subdivision and then that has been resolved and we have the plans for signature here in the office. But then it's a separate item essentially to be dedicated, which the town board would have to take. And again, there's a checklist and they're close, but not quite there.
How long do you think that, I mean, if they want to start in the next two months, would that be? I mean, if they want to start in the beginning of September, the end of August, is that going to hold them up?
That would be tight in the, the beginning of September because the August town board deadline would be the seventh of August and we again, still need a couple of things. I don't know how quickly they could get that.
So if, i- if our previous resolutions have basically stated that that no CFO should be issued before the, uh, road is dedicated, then should we change this, uh, resolution here to, to state that rather than?
Building permit.
Construction permits.
You already, guys already gave a CFO though.
Well, I, that's a different property. We're going to let somebody else handle that. I'm just, I'm just dealing with this one here for this property and should we make the, that, uh, item number ten be consistent with previous resolutions, whether they've been applied or, uh, complied with or not, that's some, that's something else, but.
Well, I think the other, just to be clear on that, the other planning board decision had permits, not CFOs.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
But again, that was only in reference to lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine. And at that time, I believe this lot was left out of it so that the new property owner could come in and build a home that they wanted to. The lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine were left in here because that was intended to be leverage over Barrow to get dedication of those properties, or of the roadway and utilities.
I mean, as of right now, Barrow doesn't own anything up there though, so he doesn't have, I mean, what's the leverage now? Because he, he, lot twenty-eight, twenty-nine was sold.
Yeah, there is not. Well, once again, I'm not concerned about somebody else's property right now. I'm concerned, I, I would like to be consistent whether complied with or not. So I, I think it's written correctly and I suppose, I propose we keep it the way it is.
Eric, I do have one more question. Was the subdivision plan ever filed?
It was filed, but it was never signed up.
So it, in our office, Chuck can sign it and it can be filed, so.
All right, I would, I would recommend that that be a condition for the board as well, that prior to issuance of building permits, that, that subdivision plan's going to have to be filed. Because otherwise you don't have a lot.
And that's fine.
So I amend my motion to include eight conditions, is that correct? Or no, no, twelve?
Twelve, twelve.
Twelve conditions.
And Connor, maybe there's some leverage that you can put on, uh, Mr. Barrow to get this done.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we'll be putting.
I'm sure, I'm sure your, your agreement with him was, you know, subject to approval of your plans. And, uh, and, uh, you know, your, your plans are approved, but they're conditionally approved based on a, a step that he has to take on his behalf to bring this thing to conclusion. So I, I would think if you could put some pressure, Mr. Barrow, that would be also helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And can I just clarify? We went through quite a bit, just so we all are on the same page. That, uh, number fifteen point that we were looking at, I believe from a previous, um, approval, previous project was for lot twenty-eight, twenty-nine and actually has nothing to do with the lot we are talking about for Dixon Schwabel, is that correct? So so we can get our building permits without this road being dedicated or is that not what I'm hearing?
So although these conditions do relate to lots twenty-eight and twenty-nine, which is not the Dixon Schwabel lot, this condition, number ten, that the planning board is considering tonight, does relate to this lot and would limit when permits can be issued.
And there's no way we can change that to CFO, so at least, you know, I mean, there's a lot, I guess, that's not in our hands and it's in the town's hands with this one, so, um, I, I'm just asking.
Directly, yes, the planning board could change that condition.
Let's just get this project going. We've been talking about this road for too long. We gotta, we got the owners right here. No, here's what has to happen. We're ready. Start building. Get, we gotta get the, the, the borrow, the, this property, get this figured out.
I'm with you, Ryan. Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, we're ready. Planning board is here, supportive and ready.
So we're going to change it to CFO then?
Yes.
No, Bill, no.
I don't think that's what Ryan's saying.
No, we're not saying that now.
No, I don't think he's saying that. I think he's saying, let's put the pressure, pressure on the town borrowers to get the dedication done so we can get moving and, and put this behind us. That's what I'm saying, right?
Yes, Gary, thank you. Yeah, you bet. Let's go. Call the question. Let's go.
I mean, this is probably going to be a two to three month process and if these, this, if Connor wants to start getting this in, he's, he's running into a, a difficult building season.
It should not be that much of a pro, i- i- if everything that I'm hearing is everything's approved in concept, it should not be that long to get this done.
But it's been this long, so I just, you know, it, that could really put a detriment on the, the, the construction schedule for this particular home.
Hurry up. We gotta, who do we need to call?
I'm not the one that's got to, I'm, we're not the ones that have to hurry. It's the town and the barrels. I mean,
Yeah.
Eric said that there's probably not going to get it in by the August meeting, so it's at least the end of September. So that means they're probably not going to be starting this thing at best till mid-September.
For, for the record, I believe the town has done everything they can to expedite that process as much as we possibly could. And I, and I think at this point, the things that are remaining to be done, a- and I think there, you're, everybody's a hundred percent tonight, correct, with everything that's been discussed. It's just, it's been so long that we, we keep approving projects to be constructed off a non-dedicated road. We're, we're, we're holding the town liable for something we shouldn't be liable for.
Yeah, we can't, yeah, it can't be done. There's a motion and a second on the table to support this project. Twenty minutes.
Well, and, and it reads as, as stated on the, uh, on the screen, so that's, if, if we want to move ahead with that, that's fine. I will call the question and take a vote.
Good.
Okay, uh, the motion was by Ryan, second by?
Aaron.
Karen, okay, uh, to handle both the seeker and the site plan approval with the eleven conditions.
Twelve.
Twelve, excuse me, that's right, I knew there was another one, uh, as stated, and, uh, let's move on and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, good luck.
Congratulations.
Chelsea.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you all.
Thank you guys very much.
Alrighty, let's, uh, take care of the mundane things. Not that John's minutes are mundane. John, you did a great job as usual. Uh, I will accept a motion to approve the July fourteenth minutes.
I'll entertain that motion to accept those minutes.
Okay. I, I will second it to show that I can step up and make a second at least. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They opposed? Uh, is there anybody else? Before I move on, anybody else out there that has any issues with us? Did we lose all our guests? I guess so. Okay, I don't want to leave anybody hanging. All right, uh, we have nothing, uh, no referrals to town boards, EBA, nothing from code enforcement. So we do have a recently added, uh, letter of credit request from Jack Leisure. I think Lance, excuse me, Eric sent it out today. Hopefully everybody gets to see it. It's what, thirty-six hundred dollars, something like that?
Thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one hundred for Mr. Leisure out on Middle Cheshire Road. All the characters have signed off on it. So I'll take a motion, or I'll make a motion to, uh, to accept the letter of credit.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, Mr. Leisure appreciates it. Okay.
One other late addition, late, late addition. We have an application for, uh, Venezia for Michael. This was on County Road sixteen. Looks like it was approved in January and I'll pull it up real quickly. This has been kind of just waiting for signature, but they need an extension on the project. If you guys recall this one, garage edition. So they're requesting an extension in ninety days. Really, it's just a matter of getting the site plans in here to be signed and then it'll be finalized and ready to go through the permitting process.
Eric, this is John. What is the number and the title of this application?
CPN nineteen dash zero nine two. Uh, it's a single-stage site plan.
And the applicant's name?
Barbara Mike, well, it's Venezian Associates for Barbara Michaels.
Hey, thanks.
I can send you the planning board decision from way back when too.
Oh, thanks.
And again, Eric, the reason for the extension request?
COVID.
COVID? All right. Okay, this was, this is the first extension. I, I'll make a motion that we extend it.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Alrighty, uh, I don't want to spend a whole lot, lot of time on the budget, but you did see our budget. I want to make sure that the board is in the loop, so to speak, and regarding the budget and not that we control a lot of the purse strings, uh, with the town budget, but it, it's something we have to be cognizant of and aware of and certainly, uh, we, we, you know, we spend money with consultants and lawyers and, uh, and even John gets paid to do his fine work. So just want to make sure we're aware of what's involved. I, if you, if there's no further discussion, we'll leave it at that unless you want to put it up, uh, since I see Excel. So everything in, uh, is, uh, in blue, highlighted in blue is what we actually are involved with, right, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay. And we got, we got revenue coming in and we got money going out, so we're, we're, we only spend money.
The, uh, one of the largest expenses has been kind of Nader in the past, which is why it's been beneficial having him like on call more than attending every meeting. There's really not much left of this budget line for this year, because there was a major budget adjustment as a result of COVID. So there, about eight thousand dollars that I put in for next year, which will give you guys plenty of money to play around with as that goes. Just again, you know, same as this year, use him judiciously.
Okay, the, uh, the mailings, uh, the postage and all that, that, is that just sort of a general expense item? Somewhere, I know we're, we're saving on that because you're not sending plans out like we.
That's a part of the miscellaneous contractual too.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's in with the same line item as Nader. Okay, Chris.
Why was the parking rec fee reduced fifty thousand dollars?
Uh, it's just a weird way the budget shows. It's, um, the ones that are expenses are shown as positive and, uh, the ones that are revenues are shown as negative. So it's not that it's reduced fifty thousand dollars. It would actually be that that's what we're predicting as income for next year.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we're all aware we have a budget, uh, like everywhere else in life, so.
Yeah, thanks.
If nobody has any questions or concerns, uh, I guess Eric will be submitting this as, uh, his submission. Very good. Thank you. Um, the report to the town board, uh, boy, it creeps up on us quickly every year and, uh, we put out a draft, uh, that Eric put together and then I went through it and, uh, massaged it a little bit. Anything, I'm, I want to make sure I get input from everybody as far as things that we've done and, or things that we should be doing or want to do in the future. So if you have any questions or comments or something you'd like to add, feel free to do it before it gets submitted. Do you want to get down to the goals? Page down there for twenty twenty-one. Sort of the ones I had thought of, uh, if anybody has any other items they'd like to see included. How about you, Ryan? Anything that we, uh,
Yeah.
might have missed?
You know, I just wanted to, I thought maybe like, do we want to explore colors of, of siding and stuff like that in the RLD? I mean, we talk about it all the time, so I didn't know if that was something we wanted to even explore. But then also, um, something I've just been always thinking about like is, do we want to work on amending the laws to include the options for seedlings? Trees, sometimes small seedlings. If we have a large area to, for landscaping, we don't really allow for seedlings unless it's a, it's a site by site in front of us. And if, if developers and had an option to consider. had an option to consider that ahead of time, it's just something, we can tackle it in the future, but it's something just to make progress. And then something that's near and dear to my heart is the option that we should really be considering in-house occupations and you know, the, the people tonight were able to get their pool house and, and basically that's another dwelling that we don't allow. But they went to the, the zoning board and, and they were able to get that um, that, that opportunity to do that. But there's people that would like to have their businesses in their houses or in their pole barns. And sometimes they might need a bathroom in there or they might a place. And, and that's just the wave of the future. It's coming, it's coming. It's already here. It's literally here so fast on us. That it would be an economic development tool for us to kinda facilitate that. But I understand that that's maybe not, it's.
No, I, you know, Ryan, I, I'm with you on that one. I think that's kinda, I mean, you look at what COVID has done for us right now and everybody is starting to maybe work more from home and this might be the future. And us recognizing that and enabling that, which uh, I mean, we're not a dense, I mean, this, you know, population like cities, but uh, they're looking at it big time because it's reducing traffic. It's reducing, you know, it's gonna have an impact on public transportation. It's gonna have all that kinda stuff. And I think we, that could be something that we could really look at. And I don't know if that fits into a mixed, more of a mixed use type of thing. If we have, that, that's what you have to do, but I, I, I think, I, I've heard a, a number of people too that would like if they have large, fairly large pop parcels and they have, you know, a horse barn or a couple of barns. And they said, hey, I'd love to, you know, convert one of my, the loft of one of my barns into an apartment or something that I could rent to somebody and get added income. Or they move in, they're, they're retired, they move into it and, and rent out their, their primary residence. Right now, we don't allow that to happen in most cases. Um, so I think that's definitely something that we could look at. More mixed use, uh, additional rental properties or, or um, you know, homes and homes that work as, as businesses as well. So I, I, I'm with you on that, Ryan. I like that idea. And, and I guess while I got the floor, the other, the other thing is um, it's kind of in here a little bit where we talk about um, it's, it's small on my screen right now, but I'm trying to
What are you looking for?
Off, off-street parking, uh, some of that kinda stuff, but I, I was wondering, I, I think the, the effort that the ordinance committee is doing um, and, and us working with them to, to change and refresh, if you will, some of the the, the laws and we got in the town. I, I, I think that's huge. And um, I, I didn't, I didn't know if we wanted that to, to stand out a little more is, is the work with the uh, the ordinance committee. I, I think, I think they're doing a great job and I think we ought to support them and, in providing uh, you know, ideas and things like that for them that, that would help enhance our
Yeah, I, I think you mentioned that up in the uh, body of the somewhere.
Yeah, it's mentioned as, you know, yeah, with everybody else, but I don't know. I, that, to me, that's kinda one that just stands out a little more. I, I don't know. That was the only thing I could think of though.
Okay, good. Uh, yeah, as far as the comprehensive plan, Eric, I, I'm sure if you did your uh, your surveys now compared to when you did them before, you find a lot more items. Uh, different things in the surveys now than you did then, such as home occupations. Uh, uh, rooms for teaching uh, for these uh, pandemic pods, they're talking about where a group of kids get together at a home and they have a teacher and uh, having those kinda things. I mean, it'll take space. So I think, I think the uh, the, the, the end, the bottom, the bottom line of the comprehensive plan is gonna be something that's uh, gonna change on the fly as it goes. Just trying to read. Well, you did put the home occupation in as a specific item. That's great. That'll work. So uh, if it, uh, if everybody's okay with it, we'll uh, send this out and it'll be our submission. And I know the town board does uh, appreciate getting this correspondence every year. Okay, uh, two other things. I wanna make sure everybody was okay with our report to the town board on our recommendation on the MEO zoning for Airport Road. I think uh, we talked about it, obviously it at our meeting and then we sort of put the burden on Eric to write the recommendation and, and heat, which he did a take a great job on. And uh, that was submitted to the board. So I would just wanna make sure everybody was okay with, uh, to the town board. Make sure everybody's okay with the way it read.
That one was approved or at least pushed on to the next phase by the town board. As part of it, you guys made the recommendation of having like a kinda stakeholder group or sort of a design charrette. Um, the town board is perfectly okay with that, but they're leaving it up to the planning board and I guess the development office to organize. So if we're to do that, we'll have to kinda discuss when, how, all that good stuff.
Yeah, I think the big thing's how. The, the logistics of how we're gonna do that under the current conditions and maybe we wait until we have some relief as to how and where, how and where we meet.
If um, I, I see after talking to Rocco, if it's to, if it would delay him significantly to like wait for us to do a design charrette, he's probably just gonna apply and do the engineering and whatnot. Which he's probably entitled to do, but
Yeah.
maybe it's smart if the planning board holds him up.
Well, I think it could, it can be concurrent with his current application, his MEO. But I think we also, as we're looking at that, wanna look at the big picture too.
Well, the next step in it is for him to prepare preliminary site plan and, you know, all the grading, engineering and all that stuff. So it's probably gotta be done before then. And there's no formal spot for that to be. So it's it's kind of up to us to pick a date time. We could, I'm sure we can throw him on another planning board agenda and you know, notice uh, various property owners and you know, whomever else.
Yeah.
That wouldn't really be an issue, but of course it, it would likely be held through Zoom.
Yeah, that'd be tough. As I said, it, it's kinda thing you wanna sort of lay everything on the table and, and point to things and say, how about this? If you move this over here and change this to that. And it's tough to do it by Zoom. All right, well, uh, yeah, just tell Rocco we're still uh, we're still in favor of trying to get together with him at some point. Uh, speaking of rezoning, uh, I don't know if everybody heard the Montrose rezoning was denied by the town board. So back to the drawing boards there.
It was denied? What was the vote? On that and who voted?
Five against.
What?
Five against.
Wow.
That's strong.
Holy cow. Wow. How
Yeah, that's the shock.
Don't say it's being recorded, the meeting.
Yeah. But I'm very disappointed in our town board.
Okay, well, that uh, that's behind us. Uh, anything else? See, I'm just looking, nothing. Well, the ordinance committee, uh, they're working on the uh, off-street parking and uh, what, you just sent the email out today. You also have the uh, we are gonna start looking at the permeable porous uh, method, methodology and details as to what constitutes a porous pavement and how we define it. And cause we talking about it a lot and we say it'd be a good idea to put it in, but boy, what is it? So
Yeah, I agree.
That's something, I think that's something you brought up, Bob, and that was
Yeah.
that was great. And we, we took it, they took it and ran with it.
Good. I saw, I saw a video the other day of a porous concrete. You poured water on it and it disappeared right through the concrete.
Yep, they have porous concrete. Yep.
Yeah. Amazing.
Okay, uh, enough, enough is enough. We've talked two hours and 47 minutes. Anybody else have anything for the good of the board? If not, uh, we'll reconvene uh, August 11th.
I think Ryan has something to add.
Oh, Ryan, has something else?
Um,
Oh, oh. You're, you're queuing Ryan for the uh,
Yeah, he always does it. It's his role.
Do the sign off? Yeah, well, I was uh, just making sure.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:42 PM.
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha, Eric. I was like, I don't know what else.
And I, I assume, Eric, we're still gonna be zooming on the 11th?
Uh, probably.
Okay, I, I agree.
The deadline or when it expires is August 6th or something like that. So we will know August 6th.
Uh, I just, what's happening in the world and in the country, I, I think things are regressing. So I, I, I wouldn't expect us to be one big happy family again for a while.
I think this is working out fine, actually.
Yeah, what, what did we decide as uh, an option paper on? It was basically if we have a convened meeting, you still have an option of zooming in? Is that where we are?
Yeah, we probably do some sort of hybrid.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Well, very good. Okay, I have a motion and a second. I don't, uh, who made the second? I, I'll make it if nobody else did.
You do.
Karen did? Okay. Uh, thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will say goodnight.
Goodnight.
If everybody be safe.
Aye.
Take care.
Good night.
Good night. Good night, John.